Good afternoon and welcome to the September 8, 2020 Board of Education meeting. At this time, Ms. Weckeser, please make note that all seven board members are present in the boardroom. At this time, I'll ask Dr. Peggy Smith for the invocation followed by a pledge of allegiance by Ms. Tracy Zukowski.
Lord, except for wars, there has never been a time when we needed you more. We come before you with humility, with heaviness of heart, but with great expectations for your grace and mercy. We also come with praise, rejoicing that you are God of all and that you will carry us through this current situation. We rejoice that these troubling times bring us to your feet. We earnestly pray for the children, Lord. We pray that their education, their social development, and their faith will grow during this time. The means for that growth, Lord, are what challenge this board. We pray for those who serve this district in whatever capacity. We pray especially for the parents and their troubles as they navigate these troubling times. We beg that you will keep all safe and keep all eager to meet the challenges. We do earnestly beg for your guidance and that you will grant us discernment for hard decisions. Most of all, Father, grant every heart your grace and your peace. Amen.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session for the purpose stated on our agenda. Motion by Mr. Wooton, second by Mr. Johnson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries seven zero. We'll now go into closed session.
...
Board of Education meeting for September 8, 2020 back in session. We have already had our invocation and pledge of allegiance and gone through closed session. So at this time...
I'll call our Board of Education meeting for September eighth, two thousand twenty back in session. We have already had our invocation and pledge of allegiance and gone through closed session. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion for our August eleventh, two thousand twenty Board of Education minutes.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Ms. Zukowski. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven zero. I'll entertain a motion for our August twenty seventh, two thousand twenty special session minutes at this time.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Smith, second by Mr. Johnson. Yes, yes, ma'am. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven zero. At this time, I will ask for discussion or adjustments to the agenda, starting with Mr. Johnson.
No adjustments.
Ms. Sessoms.
None.
Ms. Zukowski.
None, sir.
Dr. Smith.
Yes, sir. In view of the number of comments and inquiries we've had, I would request that number eight A one E be moved to section F for live comment rather than just a connection on a link. Thank you.
Okay, we will move eight A one E from consent items to section F under chief of equity, which now we will still have consent items that include letter E. We'll move F to E. Ms. Grant.
None, sir.
Mr. Wooton.
Mrs. Sutton, would you restate?
Do you have any adjustments?
No, I know adjustments.
And I have none either, so that will be the only adjustment to our agenda. All right, at this time, updates from board committees, and I'll start with Mr. Wooton.
And you interrupted me because I was preparing for that, my little statement here, but I wanted to thank the General Assembly for the hard work they fought for the school system as far as Larry Strick and Donna White and John Bell in the House, Brent Jackson, Rick Horner in the Senate for holding us harmless on bus efficiencies as well as ADM. It's going to help the system and many systems across the state of North Carolina as far as funding during this pandemic and the relief efforts there continuing to deal with in the state. The school systems need it greatly for students, and I just wanted to, I know Mr. Britt's coming later in the meeting to give us how that affects us, and I'm looking forward to that presentation. I'd also like to mention as well as we're still talking about a funding model and setting up a committee between some of the finance committee meeting members for the county commissioners and with the Board of Education to try to get a skeleton model set up where we can continue to build on for future funding of the school system and local funding, so I'm excited about that as well.
Apologize about interrupting you down there, sir.
No problem.
Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Policy Review Committee, as you can see, continues to meet and very hardworking committee, and I do appreciate you ladies and the people who come to help us, Dr. Pierce and Ms. Whittington. Legal counsel proposals, RFPs, have been sent out. We start taking applications, the in-house to Mr. Vetrano and the staff contracted services to Mr. Britt. Those proposals will be accepted September tenth through October tenth, and we've had some interest, so I'm very excited to have those proposals ready to go. And again, hardworking committee, and thank you all who served on those committees for getting all those documents ready to be distributed. And Dr. Bracy, thank you, and Ms. Wecker, sir, who she and Ms. Dublin put all those out to the public and to the universities, and Allison Schaefer at the School Boards Association. So we've had a huge team doing a large amount of work, but it has gotten done, and we're excited to see the end of it coming soon.
All right, thank you, Dr. Smith, and thank you for the updates, but I'll echo what Mr. Wooton said. We appreciate our friends in the General Assembly for assisting us and all the school systems across the state for being held harmless for the ADM as well as, you know, our bus efficiency. It's, it would have been a major task financially for not just our system, but the entire school systems in the state of North Carolina, so we do appreciate their help and listening to us. And, you know, we appreciate our constituents reaching out to some of these offices as well because after their meeting that we had that discussion a couple of meetings ago, Senator Jackson's office reached out to me and wanted more information about what we were discussing because they had some people from Johnston County reach out to them. So we appreciate everybody in the county assisting us with being another voice for us. So we appreciate that. At this time, I will go to advisory appointments, and I will start with Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Principal Jennifer Swartz is submitting reappointments for three of her current advisory council members, Amanda Barham, Brenda Harley, and Kathy Wood, and we do extend our appreciation for those ladies who have served so well and are willing to serve again. Their terms would end twenty twenty-three.
All right, we'll let that stand as our motion, and Ms. Sessoms.
Principal Dana Jernigan at Benson Middle School submits new member appointments of one year for Paul Boucher, filling the remainder of Kimberly Moore's term, and Tammy Dudley, filling the remainder of Kristy Carter's term. Terms to end in June twenty twenty-one.
All right, we'll let that stand as our second. Then I have a couple of appointments from Clayton High School, Principal Dr. Bennett Jones, new member appointments for three years for Shania Cradle, filling a vacant seat left by Missy Solomon, and Kathy Price filling a vacant seat, both terms to end in June twenty twenty-three. And then a reappointment of member Susan Doyle for three years, term to end in June of twenty-three, June of twenty twenty-three. So at this time, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next item, as you'll see, is public comment. We do have three public comments, but none of them are coming into the boardroom. They're online, so we just want to make note of that. We will not be stopping at six o'clock for any public comments due to them being online for tonight, so I just want to bring that to your attention. At this time, I'll call on Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. At this time, I ask that the Board approve consent items eight A one A through eight A one E.
I'll entertain a motion for consent items.
Accepting E, right?
Well, we moved F to E, so we had an F, so we just moved that up to.
Ah, see, I wasn't listening.
That's all right.
My apologies.
Motion by Mr. Johnson. Second by Ms. Grant. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Dr. Bracy.
Thank you again, Ms. Chair, members of the Board. Just want to give a quick summary of how we got here. I believe it was twelve days ago, we met as a Board of Education, and at that time, the Board voted to remain virtual through the entirety of the first grading period. Well, since that time, I believe a week ago today, the Governor moved the state into phase two point five, which eased some of the restrictions that we had as a state. So as a result of the Governor easing some of those restrictions, I am comfortable recommending that a small number of our students be allowed to come back to school earlier than we anticipated, and we like to present that tonight. And I'll have Ms. Ashley Rafferty here, our EC Director, Dr. Faith Jackson here as well. And what we are recommending tonight is that we allow our pre-K students and our K-12 self-contained exceptional children students return to class Monday, September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty. They will attend school on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Ms. Rafferty, did you want to add anything, or did anyone have any specific questions or concerns for Ms. Rafferty? At this time, I'll ask her to come to the podium if she wants to add something.
Can you back that up? You said pre-K and K through twelve self-contained.
Yes, sir.
Projected date for September twenty-eighth.
September twenty-eighth, yes, sir.
Maybe jumping the gun, but it is expensive sounding, very layman. What about everybody else? Do we have a plan in place for them, or are you going to get to that?
I'm going to get to that.
All right, I appreciate you, Doc.
No problem. Ms. Rafferty.
Yes, and as Dr. Bracy said, this is a small population of our EC students. We know that. We know our students need to be back in the classrooms as soon as possible. With the self-contained general curriculum and the self-contained ACS classes, that would be one hundred and twenty-seven classrooms that we would have back totaling nine hundred and ninety-five students, and that's K-12. In addition, we will have forty-five pre-K classrooms that will be back.
What about special services like speech, hearing, those services that are not umbrellaed and or self-contained?
And so each student will be meeting to do a remote contingency learning plan for virtual learning. And if that team determines, if the IP team determines that that student cannot access those services virtually, we have a process in place where the student may be able to come to the school. At this time, we are not sending our staff into a student's home, but we can schedule appointments for those services at the school level.
I think the in-school was the primary request that I kept hearing is why can't my child come to school and get services for speech and hearing and vision and those kinds of things, OTPT? Thank you.
So if parents have those concerns, they need to contact their school principal to set up an IEP team meeting, or?
Yes, they can contact their school principal or their child's EC case manager. Yes, ma'am.
So I just want to make sure I understand. So if virtual is not, those services being virtual is not working for that student, they will have the option for in-person services at the school?
Yes, the IP team will come together, and they will outline that remote learning plan, and in that, they will outline those services, whether the virtual instruction is appropriate or not for their academic services as well as related services.
Thank you, ma'am.
And Ms. Rafferty, I don't mean to skip by you. Thank you for being here and presenting.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Bracy, as far as transportation, meals and everything else, we've had time. September twenty-eighth, we got the green light. We are good to go for everything, right?
As far as picking up students, bringing them to school?
Absolutely, and the feeding, everything's in place and compliance. We're good to go.
Yes.
All right.
Ms. Rafferty, just one more question. I guess my question is not for you perhaps, but it is, how widely publicized is that process for requesting an IEP? Is that blanketed to everybody, or do they just kind of go to the website? What is the process?
Any parent that has a concern with their child's education related to the IEP should contact their child's school case manager, their EC case manager at the school.
But I guess my question is, do they know that?
Yes.
Okay. They've been, a blanket email has been sent out to all EC parents saying this is the process if you have a concern?
The parents, no. We have not sent out a blanket statement. We have shared that with our EC teachers, and they are scheduling individual meetings for all of our students for remote learning plans. Yes, ma'am?
Do we have an idea of how many of those students will remain remote and how many will come face to face?
We know right now nine hundred and ninety-five of those students will come face to face. We are still in the process of determining how many will maintain virtual. Parents are choosing to opt in to face to face based upon whether self-contained returning only is an option.
And is there a deadline for them to opt in or opt out?
Not that I'm aware of.
And then have all of our self-contained teachers and TA's been provided with the safety equipment that they need in order to work in those classrooms?
Yes, all of the teachers were sent out a form where they could submit what PPE equipment they requested above and beyond the masks. And so all of those orders have been placed, and they have started to arrive last week to all of the classrooms. There is a short delay. This Thursday, we should have all of our Plexiglas dividers delivered to all of our schools.
Is that the last piece of equipment we're waiting to get in?
Okay. Thank you.
But which, Ms. Rafferty, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, being that we would start September twenty-eighth, that gives us more than enough time to walk every school to make sure everything is in place.
Yes, sir.
That we need to be in place.
Yes, we will touch base with every classroom.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yes, because I know I've had parents and teachers reach out to me saying that foggers are not in place and that those are essential to making sure that those classrooms are cleaned thoroughly. So do we have any idea about that?
We do. Ms. Gill is going to address that when she comes forth tonight. She'll discuss the foggers, the PPE, and all those equipment. Brooks, you want to add something, sir?
Scheduled to be in our shop this weekend, and we'll be getting them out to each school soon after, so should be very soon.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Ms. Grant.
Dr. Bracy, I was just going to say, it's not pre-K through three, but it's what I wanted last week, but it is a step in the right direction, and while we have many students all over struggling, we all know that the pre-K and those EC self-contained are the most impacted, so I appreciate you giving this a second look.
Thank you, Ms. Grant.
Anyway, we can talk about the rest now, or are we going, are we good with that? Can we roll? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Jackson, everything covered that needed to be covered? Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Rafferty.
And just before Ms. Rafferty and Dr. Jackson leave, just on the next slide. I think Ms. Rafferty talked about these numbers already, the number of students that will affect that you see listed before you. There's a calendar there sort of blended into the slide as well. Nine hundred and ninety-five K through twelve self-contained EC students, four hundred and forty-five pre-kindergarten students, so.
And Dr. Bracy, how will these parents be notified?
About this opportunity. You want to address that, Ms. Rafferty? Okay, no problem.
For pre-K and EC K-12, we will send out a district-wide email. I love that idea that Dr. Smith had. We'll make sure that all staff and parents are aware of these changes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just so everyone can see, because the calendar's not that big, but everything that's yellow is face-to-face, and what is green will be remote learning. So Monday, Tuesday, face-to-face, Thursday, Friday, face-to-face, with Wednesday being remote.
Correct.
And that these students.
All students.
Will be four days per week.
That's what I was going to clarify, just to make sure Ms. Rafferty and I and Dr. Jackson and I are on the same page. Every day, this is a cohort in itself, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Am I right in that, Ms. Rafferty, Dr. Jackson? Thank you.
But I did misunderstand. I thought Wednesday was a PD day and not a remote learning day, so make sure I understand that correctly.
Please.
On Wednesdays, our teachers will participate in the professional development, our EC teachers as well as pre-K teachers. They will have activities for their students to do, just as they do for regular ed at this time.
So they're recording, tell me how that looks.
It depends on the child's needs, and that's where that remote learning plan will outline that, but it could be recordings, it could be paper packets sent home. It depends on each individual student's needs.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Dr. Bracy, for those who don't have, might have problems with email accessibility, could we do a connect ed?
We can, yes, sir. Absolutely, we can.
And I just want to thank the EC Department for the work that you've done so far, as well as EC teachers. I have a former student who is up every morning doing his schoolwork. When he's done, he emails out his work to his teachers, and it's just, there's leaps and bounds are happening right now even remotely, so thank you.
Absolutely. We have a wonderful team, and I know that all of you are advocates for our teachers. Teachers across the board, especially our EC teachers, are working tirelessly, and I'm so proud of our EC support team, and I'm just blessed to be a part of the EC team here. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rafferty, Dr. Jackson, for all you do, for helping to advocate and get our students back in school. Certainly, we appreciate it. Now, we talked about how this, Mr. Johnson, in the spirit of what you discussed, gets us back in school. We also have another unique opportunity to get a group of students back in school earlier than we anticipated. Also recommending tonight that our kindergarten students return on Monday, October twelfth. We have already previously discussed the cohort model, one and two with you. There will be two cohorts, AA on Monday and Tuesday, BB on Thursday and Friday, the same thing that Dr. Smith mentioned. A moment ago, reference to EC and pre-K will be applicable on Wednesday. PD, deep cleaning, and other things, that'll be applicable on Wednesdays going forward with kindergarten. Excited to be able to get kindergarten students. Excited to be able to get kindergarten students in school a week early. I think this will be a great opportunity for our teachers and administrators to show our students how to socially distance in the building, in line, in class, in less structured environments such as outside recess as well. It's one of the most, anybody that's ever run an elementary school knows that's one of the most exciting times ever when the kindergarten students are staggering into the buildings. And with everything, the way it's aligned this year with cohorts AA and BB, it's a natural stagger until further notice. So I'm excited about this to be able to get our kindergarten students in a little bit earlier as well.
Dr. Bracy, I know you have a great explanation for, you know, 9/28, getting our pre-K and EC in, and then October 12th for our kindergarten students. So do you mind giving us your reasoning behind that?
Which one, October 12th?
Yeah, why not, why not come back with them at the same time as our other students?
Well, I'll say this, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The pandemic is real and we have to slowly walk ourselves back to school and work toward taking baby steps as we come back to normalcy. So it's good to get everybody back in school, but we want to be very intentional and purposeful and come back in lower numbers than we normally would. I think it's wise of us to do it that way, to come back in smaller numbers. And when you have a school system this big, when you just do kindergarten, that's several thousand students that are returning to the building. So this gives us an opportunity to bring pre-K, kindergarten, self-contained exceptional children. It gives us an opportunity to do our safety protocols, get used to kids, think about it. Now, we haven't had kids in the building since March. And this is definitely, we talk about new normal. This is definitely a new normal. Taking temperatures as students rolled up on buses, in carpool lines. So we want to get these protocol and safety regulations down to a science. And this will allow us to do that, bringing them back in small numbers.
Thank you.
And we still offer virtual for those parents and students who requested it. And those numbers haven't changed since we started this process. What was it, back in July?
You mean the number of students that have requested virtual?
Correct.
I don't know the exact number anymore. Dr. Coats probably knows that number off the top of her head. But to answer your question, yes, students will still have the opportunity to remain virtual if they so choose.
Gotcha.
So.
But I think if we do this face-to-face at a high level and at a safe level, some students will, and some families will request to come back face-to-face as they see it working in our schools each day. I'm sorry, Mr. Caskin.
Well, I was just going to ask, how is that going to look for, for example, in school A, there's five kindergarten teachers. Will two be remote and do only the virtual teaching? And then the other three teachers do face-to-face only? Or is there going to be a combination of both?
I think it'll be a combination of both depending on how the principal arranges that. And that will also be based on the number of students that request face-to-face and request virtual. All of that will be contingent upon those numbers.
Okay. And I just hope that we'll be cognizant of the fact that just having a camera on the teacher while she's teaching is not effective virtual instruction. That, and that we cannot overtax these teachers by expecting them to do face-to-face instruction all day and then spend the next six hours recording lessons for the next day.
One other thing that has been brought to my attention by some medical friends, people have been out of contact, many people, not everybody, for seven months. That means that immune systems have gotten depressed. And so when we return, it's not going to just be COVID that is going to be an issue, but they're going to pick up things again. And so I just want everybody to realize that unless they send their children to school with the expectation that they observe protocol, we're going to see some dramatic increases in other kinds of illness. I feel comfortable with the younger children not being COVID risks to the extent that maybe other groups are. But I don't want us to think that we aren't going to have other kinds of immune upticks, if that makes sense. I've been told that by several people that I trust. So just if parents elect to bring their children back to school, they're going to have to reinforce that their children must follow protocols. They can't hug. We want to do that. We can't take off our mask. We want to do that. But I just want people to understand the commitment they're making to following the protocols, not just for COVID, but for other illnesses as well.
Well, and I would also like to make sure that our parents understand because since we're baby stepping into this, and I think for all the right reasons, the question is going to be, well, why can't we do K-12 all at one time? And we are still under governor's orders for social distancing. We don't have the classroom space to bring everybody back and be in compliance with those orders. Am I correct?
Correct.
We also don't have the staff to teach those students at this point between medical accommodations, teachers out on quarantine, those who have retired, taken early retirement or resigned because they did not get medical accommodations, that we simply do not have the staff at this point to bring everyone back. Am I correct in saying that?
Mr. Vetrano would have those more specific numbers than I would, but that part of our logistical issues have been what you just described. Yes, ma'am.
And Ms. Sessoms, I have asked Mr. Vetrano to step into the board meeting at his time. This is on the agenda even though he has no reports, just to give us an update on that as well. And Mr. Britt's going to give us some more update at his point in the presentation as far as how it affects us financially from the standpoint of abiding by the governor's orders in certain things such as the CARES Act money and so forth.
And I imagine you're going to outline the rest of elementary, middle and high throughout this presentation. But, Mr. Chairman, would this have to be transitioned into an action item tonight so we can vote on it?
I do not believe we, this is the superintendent's recommendation. We do not have to.
Well, we voted on the last one, so I'm assuming we're going to have to vote on this one.
Well, okay, we would have to move this from an information, but so from that standpoint, no, we're not done.
No, we're not done yet. The last direction we got from you, the Board of Education, was to be prepared when we decided to be, remain virtual. The entire grading period was to be prepared for school to return on October 19th. So we will allow the rest of our elementary students, first through fifth grade, to return on October 19th. And they'll have the same consistent cohorts that kindergarten does. So K-5 will remain cohort one and two, AA, Monday, Tuesday, BB, Thursday and Friday.
Any questions on that piece?
Are we going to be providing teachers with support so that they can handle that blended model for the same reasons that I spoke about with the kindergarten children having to teach face-to-face? And then on top of that, do a virtual piece? Or how are we going to support teachers?
I'm going to ask Dr. Coats to come in and address that. She can come, Dr. Coats, please come in now and address that, please. I don't know if you heard the question, or we can repeat it if you did not. Yes, hey, Dr. Coats.
Hey. I was working in the virtual program numbers, so you might have to repeat the question that I've been asked to address. What can I address for you?
How are we going to support our elementary teachers so that they're not doing a double load of work by teaching face-to-face all day and then trying to record and provide virtual learning?
Okay, well, I'll probably have to make several comments to address that. First, I suspect when we come back to school, we'll see a mass exit from the virtual program. I just, I believe that we will. Can't prove that. But I'm getting requests constantly that virtual's not working. I want to go back face-to-face. So when we actually get in that model, I think we'll have a significant reduction in the number of people requesting virtual. That, of course, is a domino effect on the teachers' teaching. So some things that are in place, because we will support in every way that we can, but to say exactly what that's going to look like, it will depend on the numbers. And it will still depend upon some of the stuff Mr. Vetrano will speak about with respect to accommodations. We don't, I don't, I don't have details on that, just numbers. So if we continue to have large numbers of accommodations, we will certainly have a situation where some teachers will be teaching virtually. And it will be easier to separate that if those numbers reduce. Can't guarantee that will happen because, again, we don't know what that's going to look like. Some of the things that we are doing right now to support all teachers in the burden of teaching both ways that you just discussed. A lot of our schools are planning PLC-wide, like first grade English. Instead of having four teachers do separate planning, they're planning those things together and sharing that teaching load. I think earlier I had a question posed to me in an email about large class sizes. What's happening with some of those situations? And I'll give a specific example at a school that has only two teachers who are face-to-face for a whole grade level. So what they're doing in their content area, they have the students assigned to individual teachers, but they start the day's lesson in a large group setting, 15 minutes, to go over goals, expectations, what we're going to learn today. That is a large group session and that's where those large numbers are coming from. They share that responsibility to plan that introduction so that one teacher's not doing everything. And then after about 15 to 20 minutes of that, they break out to their assigned teacher in a small group. And the principal that I spoke with about that explained to me a really good point that we don't know what it's going to look like when we come back. We may have to change teachers. We may have to reassign students. And it will have at least started some type of relationship building when the students have seen those teachers. So that's one of the things they're doing. We are providing PD. We've got PD out there now. We're also trying to provide upon request if individuals need it. We're still doing our support sessions. We will continue to do those. We will just do everything that we possibly can to support them, but it will come down to the numbers of, all the kids have to be taught. And we will have to figure that out as those numbers change, as we're doing right now. What I hope would happen, one of the things we've had to do because of numbers of students and our class size caps, we've not had that relaxed. So as you know, the K-3s under that cap, we've had to create sections where a teacher is virtual at maybe Westview, but she might be teaching a student at Cleveland because of the numbers, even though that student is staying tied to Cleveland for ADM. We are creating that section that shows that student in both schools so that that teacher can teach that student. So we're doing those types of things now just to make it work so that every child has a teacher.
I think maybe Ms. Sessoms' question was not understood. Here's what I understood your question to be. I'm a teacher in the classroom Monday and Tuesday with Cohort A. Cohort B and C are at home. Your question was, how am I addressing the needs of my at-home learners? Not our virtual students who are enrolled in the virtual program. They have their own set of teachers and their own set of. But your question, in my understanding, was, who's teaching those B and C students? I mean, that BB cohort who are at home.
While they're out. Okay.
That's correct.
That's being done different ways too. Some teachers are pre-recording lessons and showing those. Some teachers are sharing that responsibility. Let's say we're both teaching, you're Cohort A, while I'm teaching directly Cohort A, you might be working with the students at home virtually and vice versa. It's different ways. There's not just one way because it, again, depends on the numbers at those schools. What is happening now, we have a combination, and we've left that decision to principals. We have a combination of pre-recorded lessons that are posted or live-recorded lessons that are posted. And there's advantages and disadvantages to both. One of the disadvantages to live is you can't control what's going to happen when you're recording that lesson. And if you end up with a situation that you have recorded live and can't post it, you either have to pre-record another lesson or edit, which takes a lot of time. So some of our principals have had their teachers pre-record and they show them to each other and critique them and share them. Others are trying to record some live lessons if they have a teacher assistant who's there to help them because it's kind of hard to do that. It's hard to teach it and record it at the same time. So we're just, we don't have, there's not a single magic answer because it depends on what the needs are at each school and how many teachers are at each school and how many students they have to teach in that content.
And, you know, I appreciate, like, Dr. Bracy is all about site-based management and you run your school, you run your classroom the way you see fit. Can you give us an example of like an effective way that you've seen that done where they're delivering the instruction? Like maybe a good example? Because if it's like me in my job, I only know something because someone showed me how to do it.
Yes, and our principals are working together. And we in CIA are planning to work continually with our principals. We've heard, you've shared the concerns with us about consistency across grade levels. You know, fifth grade here and fifth grade on that side of the county being similar. And we certainly have looked into any concern you've shared with us. If it has mentioned a school, we've reached out. If it's anonymous, we really can't do a lot unless we just have a general principals' meeting, which we're looking at doing some of those things. But here's a really good example. I taught with a particular principal today, and I've taught with several. And there are lots of schools doing this. But what they have in place is reading and math, of course, is everyone's focus. That's assessed. Science is assessed at certain grade levels, and I'm speaking elementary, middle. So we have asked, when we put out our guidance, we asked that we focus on reading and math, that we integrate science and social studies and that we don't chunk our enhancements by the wayside. So I'll just kind of share a collage of some great practices. One school I saw had what they called enhancement board. And there's a block of the day for enhancements. And there's a selection. All the teachers have contributed and students have to pick and choose. They have to eventually do something from everywhere, but they're not meeting necessarily every day in a PE class. It's a choice across the way, music, art, PE, that type of thing. Another thing that a school is doing, they're doing all of their math and reading direct instruction in the morning. They're having that one hour at lunch. That's no synchronous learning across the school. The afternoon is support sessions. Teachers have office hours every day. And this is a school that's using one day a week for the professional development and office hours. And if they're not in PD, they're offering a two-hour block all day that day. Every teacher has a block or any student that's struggling can call in and get individualized help. Same thing every day. That's what they're doing during their office hours. If a student struggles, they can either email the teacher. A lot of them are doing it through email and they can make an appointment for an extended session or just email and talk. So those are just some strategies across the way that are working. This is something that you can plan and prepare for, but until you actually live in it and experience it, you can't. And just to keep in mind, our elementary schedules were created planning to come back September 8th. So they've had to do a big switch because they logically created the schedule that they could just ease right into when they came back face-to-face. So we're continuing to work with our principals on all of those things to provide more consistency and to be as targeted as possible with student instruction. One more thing I do want to add with respect to screen time, and this is just general information. It will be a simple thing, it would be a simple thing to say, these are the number of screen hours you will direct instruct every day. But then when you talk about meeting individual student needs, those things vary from school to school. And depending upon the special needs, we might have some virtual sessions to support special needs. Depending upon where a student is in their reading or math skills, they may have some additional online time in our targeted intervention. Both of those are digital. Our targeted intervention for English Language Arts in K-8 is Lexia. It's digital. Dreambox for math, it's digital. So if a student needs some targeted skill development there in addition to the content, that adds some screen time to them. So it's hard to say keep it exact, and you can do that, but then you still have to meet individual students' needs. Some of the principals I spoke with today assured me that if a parent had requested non-digital supports, they received them. They printed them. They would have an arrangement to pick them up. I know one of our schools has a digital library pickup process. You go online, you check out your books. They put them in a bag, put them by the door, tell you when to come. You find your bag, you grab it and go. So they're being very creative to support everything that we can.
So they are getting their textbooks? They are getting.
If there are textbooks available, they have them already, yes.
I had another question as well. A lot of children are in daycare.
Yes, ma'am.
Without access to those live classes Without access to those live classes and their parents are working eight hours? They're coming home and having to do the best they can, as one parent said, as actually many parents said. So what, I, I'm not asking teachers to teach at night, that's not at all where I'm going. But I want to make sure that the resources for these parents are there and, and that resources like books, like their instructional materials are available because parents say, I'm not trained to be a teacher. I don't know what I'm doing. My child is getting farther and farther behind. I end up in tears, they end up in tears. You, you all hear it, it's not just me. And we, we really have to be thoughtful and intentional about how to help. And, and I don't know what the answer is. I don't know if it's staggered days, I don't know what it is. I'm just asking that something be done to accommodate children who are not in front of that computer when the teacher's in front of that computer. That's all I'm asking.
Well, and, and to accommodate those parents too, because they're, i- if they're working all day, they, what I'm hearing from parents is they're coming home and they're s- sitting on the computer with their children until 10:30 and 11 o'clock at night because there's five hours of recorded instruct, which has, I understand is a problem. That some of our students have used up all of their gigabytes for the month because of the heavy recording that's being streamed for their lessons. Some, those are things that again, we were continuing to address and work out with our principals. And I had a train of thought, I wanted to say and I forgot it. Um, it'll come back. While you're thinking about it.
We're taking a lot of information coming from six different directions.
It's just my, I'm just old.
I've left it alone though.
My brain's old.
To piggyback on what both of them said, when we started this process, we said that we would offer flexibility on assignments.
Yes.
Because these parents, some of them, they can't come home and then do this and get the assignment in the next day. So we had said if assignments were in by Sunday or something, it, they would be counted. But we're hearing that assignments are due tomorrow.
When you, when you, they always ask them, but then what, if it doesn't happen, I checked on that today with a couple of, I didn't call all, all 40-plus principals, but I did check in with some. And what they're doing, of course, they, they give a date when something's due and if you can, you get it done. But I know several teachers shared with me today that what they're doing is checking to see, maybe they didn't do the ticket out the door, but maybe they saw, they checked in and did a part of something. Because the, the, the big, the big deal on the assignment participation on a certain day is attendance. It's not doing that. They are being flexible with assignments. What I, I just thought of what I wanted to say. When, when you get specific concerns, um, I would address those with the principal about a specific situation and I appreciate getting the specific ones, but it's very hard to address them if you don't know. Like I, you forwarded me several emails, I've addressed those and I've reached out to several parents and it wasn't nearly as bad as I had hoped, you know, it sounded. And it was a simple fix. I know one student was very frustrated with logins. Well, what had happened the first time he logged into ClassLink, he logged in incorrectly and it remembered it. So when you log in incorrectly, it remembers you and it remembered the incorrect instead of the correct. We had to reset that. It took about 30 seconds, but just figuring out what it was. So we, we will continue to address those individual concerns and we are continuing to work with our folks on as much consistency as possible because nobody intends for a student to have five hours of, of something at night. But again, we're also trying to be flexible and keep in mind that we do not have a waiver for accountability. So there's that, there's that balance of trying to ensure that students whom we know, um, didn't get the same direct instruction in the spring when we closed that they're getting now. And the fact that we're going to be accountable for student achievement this year, so it's a balancing act. And, and you know, as, as Dr. Bracy said, when everybody can come back, it'll be better. We just have to continue to work and change and improve and react until we can, until it's safe to come back.
We just need to make sure that the parents understand the flexibility part. I mean, if they need to do something that day so that attendance is counted, but everything's due by Sunday or something, they just need to understand something because they are totally stressing over how to get all this done at night when they come home from work.
And I, I would imagine, correct me if I'm wrong, that we're acting in the forgiving vein, like we are giving the flexibility, teachers are working. And look, I understand the concerns. I work with a building full of type A personalities and when something's not right, they're gonna stop by and let me know. And I have one young lady who lets me know, shows me the emails and the communication. However, I don't forward them to anybody, sorry. But I think that no matter how inefficient something is, as long as we keep trying. And like you said, Dr. Coats, like you said, Dr. Bracy, when we get them back in the building, everything's gonna be solved anyway. But until then, no matter how inefficient, as long as we're getting there and showing that forgiveness, being flexible, I think that's gonna be in the best purpose. And with that being said, I'm recalling a time where, I think it was Stephen Baker, it was Stephen Baker, he stood up here and he talked about the difference between fluid and crystallized intelligence and the ability to kind of move through a situation reasonably. And we're seeing now who can and cannot move through certain situations and get the job done. You know, crystallization being the accumulation of facts and regurgitation, fluid being, let's work through this. And I will say that no matter how many setbacks it seems we have, we do have a group of people here that are really trying to move through this situation and get it done. And I appreciate you guys, even though I don't show it all the time, but I still maintain that if you got a K-3 certification, keep that in your back pocket, Doc, because we may need you to tag in, alright?
We, we just want to know specifics so that we can make it better. And, and that is why I say to share, if you do get, I don't retaliate, these principals don't want to retaliate. They, they have the same skin in the game we do. They want students to learn and achieve. So the way we do that is to look at anything that needs to be better and make it better.
So with that being said and, and talking about accountability, um, there are some, some concerns in the high school arena about only being able to teach new instruction for two to three sessions a week. And teachers are concerned that there's gonna be a lot that's not going, they're not gonna be able to get through the curriculum in time for the EOCs.
Okay, that's not been expressed to me. First time I've heard that concern from high school.
I got it on the way to the board.
You just got it, yes.
Dr. Coats?
Yes.
Um, just a couple of things. Thank you for the information you brought tonight. In regards to some of the larger classes, and I think the perception of that is, um, basically the Google Suites that we signed the contract Google Suite last month. And my understanding, have we got the links sent to the schools where they can account?
It, it, yes. Nothing changed for them. The, we, we got Google Enterprise Suite free in the spring. So our contract to keep it was to provide what we had been given free. You know, everybody got free stuff in the spring. Very great marketing term, because everybody wants it now. And so they didn't skip a beat. They don't feel anything different. What it, what is not happening is there are, there are, uh, components, I don't know if you call them add-ons or what, but there are features in Google Suite that Google hasn't released yet that when they do, will have it. But one of those is turning off the chat. Because I know one of the emails, the parents said, just turn off the chat. Well, you can't turn off the chat.
Well.
But you will be able to hopefully if that gets sent down from Google. So anything that's a part of that goes automatically out to us and they, they've never skipped a beat.
Okay. And will the, would that be one of the add-on features be the breakout sessions? Because I know.
They still, they have those now in Google.
For my, I'm just gonna give you an example. My wife, they tried it in sixth grade ELA, but they couldn't get no more than 12 on the breakout session. So what they had to do was they met like in a large setting and then they'd go out and go into different links to accommodate that.
What school is that? And I'll just have, I'll ask Amy to.
North Johnston Middle. And they reached out to Ms. Stanley as well, but it's North Johnston Middle. If you don't mind checking into that because I think.
I'll be glad to.
That that was an issue with some of the large group setting, that might be the issue that they're seeing from that side.
Because the school I talked to today did something very similar, but they break out into their full class. So I know they can do it. It might be a setup or something like that.
Okay. And then the second thing is, if you don't mind just reaching out to all the schools in relation to what, um, Mr. Johnson, Ms. Sessoms and Ms. Grant are talking about, the flexibility for these parents, because we're getting emails about that. And, um, if we can just communicate that to the, to the schools, that please understand, give them flexibility. These parents are doing the best they can. Just reiterate that. I know we've probably said it, but I just want to make sure all our parents understand that we're listening to them.
Well, they, they just need a timeline of when things have to be turned in. I think, and I get, I've gotten a lot of that as well, is parents feel like they're coming home from work and they gotta sit in front of a screen for seven hours. So I guess, but you know, we've almost given them something that's impossible to do.
Well, and.
Difficult.
And it's, the frustration is already there. So let's make it, let's make it more flexible so the parents can.
Here's why I said I would love to know the who's, because there could, there was one situation that was brought to my attention that was specific. And when I reached out to the principal, she had no idea and she addressed it specifically. Nobody got in trouble, but it corrected. So i- if there is something that needs to be corrected as the speci- specificity, there you go. I'm a numbers person. That is helpful to know, not for retaliation, but just so that we can be improved. Nobody in our school system doesn't want to. We all want to be better. We all want the high student achievement and we all want to make this impossible situation as doable and flexible as it possibly can be.
Well, with that flexibility, we also have to keep in mind that teachers have to provide feedback too. So if I was a teacher and I signed something today, maybe I don't expect for it to be due today, maybe it's due at midnight on Sunday. That gives the student the weekend to work on things and the parents to help on the weekend if, if needed.
So what I would say to the board members is, is we get these schools that are, you know, we're getting parents from these schools, let's just, uh, send them directly to Dr. Coats so that she can address the flexibility issues that we have.
I don't want that, I won't bet, I really don't. We need to know what those concerns are.
And sometimes we don't know. I mean, I get, people will say, I'm, I'm a Johnston County Schools employee, but they have a Gmail and a, um, Mom4, they don't tell us who they are, but I, I try to send you what I think is fixable. And just one, one last point about the, the 200 students in a class. We, we talked last time about children needing to have a small group and build relationships. I, I hear from a lot of parents that, well, one, one quoted the law and said 50 was the, um, limit for online classes. So I, I want us not to lose sight of the fact that these are children. I don't care if they're 12th graders, they're still students in our system and they need to understand they're people and not just a number on a screen. So, um, if we can, if we can make it same for both the teacher and the students, I would really appreciate that.
And in possible times, everybody wants to be mad at somebody, whether people pointing a finger at us, pointing a finger at the teachers, teachers pointing fingers at the parents. When you have frustrating times, everybody wants to be upset with somebody. And we gotta remember that our emails are blowing up, people are contacting us. But I would argue that 95% of the parents, 99% of the parents are just trying to grin and bear it, just trying to work through it and do what is best for their kids. So, you know, keep those emails coming. And I've had worse said to me. But I just want to thank everyone involved in this process. The Board of Education is, I mean, I hate to say it's nothing, but some people that show up and talk for about five or six hours every couple of weeks.
Hopefully not tonight.
Well, hopefully not tonight, but you know, we're not really putting in much work. The people who are putting in the work are in the classrooms in these buildings. So I get that. But yeah, in frustrating times, people will point the finger at each other. And I imagine when we get those kids back in, finger points over, what else, they'll just point the finger about something else, but I'm good with that. We can just move on. So again, thank you, Dr. Coats.
You're welcome. Thank the people in the trenches. The people in the trenches.
Yes, and, and I, you know, um, as, as Mr. Johnson said, we have, you know, parents who are, that they're definitely in, in uncharted territory and so are our employees. And I just appreciate, um, everything that our staff and our teachers are doing. I, I don't know that they've ever been so challenged or worked as hard. And it's a, right, a- a- as Mr. Johnson said, when you're going through difficulties right now, it's, it's, people become frustrated, they point their fingers because that's what humans do. But, um, I just want to thank all of you for what you're doing and thank our teachers and the people who are on the ground making it happen. Um, and, and I can promise you that just as soon as government lifts restrictions so that we can bring these children back, that's what we all want to see. We all want these children back.
With that being.
I got one more. Uh, Dr. Coats?
Yes.
Uh, one of the tools that we were providing our teachers to try and help during this virtual and remote teaching, uh, is the Apex Learning. Have you had an opportunity to look at that and see if that is doing what we hoped it would do for them?
I pulled up the, I can pull up the logins per week. Um, I, I have administrative, so I can see how many people, I don't know if login is the right word, but how many people access it. There've been over 7,000 since school started and keep in mind, that's probably not something that was set up in ClassLink until about a week or so after school started. There were over 2,500, um, last week, there were over 600 a day. So it's being used. It is being used.
Good.
And then one thing I want to share, and, and it will go out soon, our department's working closely with tech folks because there's just so much of, of what we're doing now that's overlapping. And, um, Amy Stanley and members of her team have created all of these little resources because teachers, you know, you use what you use. If I'm a Google Meet person, I might not be so good in Canvas, but they're creating some, some, it's really just a cute little infographic, but it has the, uh, ClassLink logo for each of the programs and the primary uses of each of those. And they've got those out in six categories, they're working on getting that out. That's prepared to go out, the teachers probably will go out this week. And that will be a help because teachers use what they use, but if they've never used a product, they may not know how to use a product. So that's something else we're doing to try to support our teachers.
So Dr. Bracy, is there a way we can, you know, I don't, I don't know if it's survey or, or what's the best approach, but you know, we've been doing this for how many weeks now?
Can I address that? Because we do have a panorama survey that's available on this type of environment that we've sent, that we're planning to, to do. Uh, I can't remember if the window's end of September or 1st of October, but it is targeted toward this type of environment so that we get feedback. You know, you need to know the truth, it might not be what you want to hear.
Sure. We need, I mean.
You need to know it.
Even though we're gonna bring children back, it's still part virtual, part in-person, or all virtual, depending on what the parent has selected. But you know, we need to make sure that the teachers have all the, you know, what resources working for them?
Right.
If it's not working, what help do they need to make it work? You know, what professional development do they need? I mean, that Wednesday PD day was, is designed to help them teach virtually. So whatever we can do to make sure we're getting all of their questions answered and giving them all the help that they need. You know, we focused a lot on students' needs and parents' needs and, and that is very, very important. But if we're not meeting the needs of the teachers, they can't meet the needs of the students. So if, if that's the way we're gonna do it, that's great. I just, you know, sooner rather than later, I think we need to.
Right.
Hear from all those teachers, what's working, what's not working, what can we do better, what can we supply?
And we did that, our last teacher advisory council meeting was the whole, we didn't even plan an agenda apart from how's it going? And we also have a, a list, when they request a resource, we have a team that looks at that. We've got a list right now, we're meeting tomorrow to evaluate requests. We run that through the principals on what we can and can't buy because, you know, we could buy a lot of things this year with CARESAC money, but we're not going to have it next year and we want to be sure we spend that money wisely and use, use it to, to serve the better needs of students. But all they have to do, and we have continually communicated this, is let us know what you need. I don't want to assume what they need. I want them to tell us what they need and then we're gonna do our best to provide what they need. We had a request today for enhancement PD. I called Michelle Casey, she's already working on that, how we can make that happen, targeted for enhancement classes. Any other questions for me?
I just want to thank you for keeping sustainability in mind.
Thank you.
Dr. Coats, with everyone being at home and textbook issues, does all students have textbooks they need at home?
If, if the tech, no. I mean, if textbooks are available and they were able to be issued, as I shared with you before, we've not adopted curriculum in a long, long time, K-12. So a lot of our textbooks are classroom sets. So if they have just a classroom set, they won't be available. With our English Language Arts adoption, they're individual consumable materials for every child. They have those. If anything is consumable and available, they have it. Anything that we could put into their hands, they have, but we just don't have those resources like we used to years ago. We just don't anymore. We need it badly. Remember that. Math, math.
Thank you, Dr. Coats.
Thank you.
Thank you, board members. Just wanted to, Ms. Gill was, had an emergency that caused her to step out. She's on her way back, but I wanted to move ahead to Ms. Casey, not Ms. Casey, Ms. Turnage. Because I believe that Ms. Sesams asked a question about gigabytes. And I believe Ms. Turnage, Sprint is the gigabyte issue hotspot, right? I'm sorry. The rest of them are unlimited. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, the Verizon's are unlimited and they don't de-throttle. Some of them say they're unlimited, but they're actually 20 or 30 gig and then they slow them down to two gigs when they've used up all their data. And Verizon is not doing that right now until probably June.
Okay.
The Sprints were 20 when we purchased them and they're now 10. So they really, they can't even get a week or two out of them. So, but we're trying.
So what are we doing for those kids? Are they going to receive Verizon pieces at some point?
Right now, we're trying to float around, accommodate it. It might be based on age or exactly where they live because Sprint has very poor coverage in this county. So we're looking at addresses and if there's two or three kids in the house, you know, we're trying to give them each a Sprint. And again, reiterate that this is educational use, you know, because you'll gobble it up quick.
Do we know how many students are being impacted by the Sprint issue?
Probably a couple, maybe a dozen or less per school. They're calling us and they're switching them out. I mean, the school's being really proactive about assisting these kids and getting what they need so they can progress.
And I would like to add, Ms. Wooden, I know you think your finger's on the thing to ask a question. I would just like to thank the board for your generosity in allowing us to use these CARES funds to purchase so many hotspots that we've purchased. And, you know, initially, was it 3,000 we purchased?
We had 750 Sprints that we bought at a deal, you know, in March and we purchased 3,000. We purchased 300 a week or so ago. They're in and they're deployed. And then we have another order for 300 that we hope will be in here by the end of the week. They didn't, I guess I updated the sheet before they loaded it, but we have about 462 requests on the waitlist right now. We did go back Friday and pull what schools did not check out. Some of them were kind of hiding them or hoarding them. So we have about 150 on hand. With the 300, we'd be really, really close getting everybody accommodated. The state called today and we're supposed to get some more hotspots. And I specifically asked for Verizon because of the unlimited data. So I won't know until later this week exactly how many they're going to give us. So hopefully that'll give us a little bit of wiggle room and switch out for surplus or any other issues and continue to help address with the Sprint limitations.
And some of those new orders, people that, new requests, I should say, some of those new requests were probably students that weren't with us that had the opportunity to request them initially. Is that the case in some cases? Or you don't know, you're not sure?
Some of them, a lot of them, I think, once they've got into it and, you know, you're doing streaming four or five hours a day, you know, even my DSL at home, my CenturyLink, it's not, it won't do that. So most of them are coming back now with inadequate internet. We tried to focus on, you know, students without internet and then inadequate and how many siblings in the home. But more than likely, at this point, this late in the game, it's getting down to inadequate internet because we still have them trickling in. Like I said, we have 460 on a waitlist right now today.
So are there, and you're probably not the person to answer this. So Dr. Bracy, so for those students who have the Sprint and it's an issue, are we, are we communicating with those families and offering paper packets or some other alternative?
We're trying to switch them out as quick as we can and be sure they can keep going. You know, whether it's a problem with a Chromebook or a problem with a hotspot, we're trying to be sure the school swaps them out and do all we can.
Pretty much, Ms. Gill, Ms. Turnage, correct me if I'm wrong. If someone has requested a hotspot, a Chromebook, we've accommodated them in most cases. Is that correct?
Every Chromebook request, whether it's staff or student, has been accommodated. And I had different numbers, but I guess I was too late when I got them in. And for hotspot, yes, we have the waiting list, but hopefully within the next week, week and a half at most, we'll get all the requests fulfilled.
But like Ms. Sesams just said, if their hotspot has run out of data or they're on a waiting list to receive, do they have paper packets in the meantime? Because, I mean, they're dead in the water if they don't and they don't have access to the hotspot.
Right. And we have been truly focused on, on the technology infrastructure side, on getting as much equipment out as we possibly can. But we are certainly at the point where the schools are communicating, and, hi, everybody. How are you? And the schools are communicating, we have to make sure that we do the communication to make sure that a child is not in any way held to any sort of standard and make sure that we work with those families as we wait for these. We're certainly not the only district, as you've read about, who is in this situation. As a matter of fact, I think there's a tremendous number of successes that we have had. It is disappointing that we are dealing with the situation with the Sprints. We are trying to keep those children just on those. At first, you know, we have an FAQ on our technology help site. And that tells parents and students what you can expect to be able to do with the educationally speaking. So if a lot of searches were done, those types of things early, you could have burned through that data initially. But when you get your next round, that's not to say it won't last longer. The other thing we have learned about the Sprints, and if I'm repeating myself, I apologize, is that leaving one child on them, whereas Verizon's, you can have people to share those better. So we've learned some things over the course of the past month. So again, we are having folks ask us if they can swap them out. And of course, we wait until the Verizon's come. We also check the coverage maps to make sure that the kids who are getting them are actually the ones that can get the most use out of them. And quite frankly, a lot of this is learning experience from us never having done this extent of getting this kind of stuff out there. But we are encouraged that we are now getting to the point where we're actually finding children who have not picked them up and then reassigning them to other people, finding siblings who they can share, working with the daycares and trying to do as you've seen with the Rangers that we've got in here. So there's a lot of collaboration that has gone on to help us get better. So yes, we need to make sure that children are provided as much as they possibly can during this period of time while we wait to get them this next and hopefully final round. We did tell the principals last week that all their communication as far as getting these out needed to be complete last week in order to do that. And I may have said this last go around, or I may have said it to Dr. Bracy. One of the things, you know, we had the data for how many kids needed these, but one of the things you can't count on is our last round of folks was our kindergarten folks and exactly how many kindergarten families were going to end up needing that. But that's where we are at this point. So let me go back and take that information to Dr. Pierce, Ms. Whittington, and let us collectively make it very clear that we do have some students who are in that interim situation with their Sprint devices.
Thank you, Ms. Gill.
Yes.
Ms. Turnage, thank you so much for standing in. Mr. Johnson asked a question about 6th through 12th grade. Our middle school and high school principals, members of the board, have asked for a few more days to formulate their cohorts. We're looking at them being on the same type of cohort, so they just want a few more days. They begin school, as you will remember, on October 19th. So they have a little time to sit down and meet again and formulate consistent cohorts if possible. So that's where we are with the rest of the grade levels. Yes, sir.
Dr. Bracy, the one protocol that I still, maybe they have answered it, was taking temperatures before they get on a bus versus, has that been cleared up?
It has. Ms. Gill, if you'll step back to the podium.
Say that, Ms. Gill.
Yes, yes. What we finally landed on was that during this period of time, we did order thermometers for all of the buses. And we are going to go ahead and take their temperature upon getting on the bus. And we do need to do some training with our folks. The one thing that I would at least have everybody kind of be aware of is that our TD-29s, which are our routes, are made with a certain amount of time at each stop. While we are learning to do this, be safe with your hand signals. Make sure your stop arm and all those things are out and you're having children waiting to come up. Understand that that may, every 30 seconds or so begins to add up. So we will have some fluctuations and it may go much better in arrival times, but just understand that's just a part of that learning curve of them doing that process. And one of the other things you'll see is we have some printed signs that have the screening symptoms on the side. So as they arrive, you know, they'll, especially for your older kids, are able to see those screening signs, get their temperature taken. But of course, if they have a temperature, they will still have, if their parent's there, certainly you can, you can have some conversation. If not, then they would have a certain seat on the bus when they get there. And then we would have to triage them into one of our healthcare situations that our nurses are working on. So that will be in our training packages as soon as we're go time for buses and we'll make it happen.
Thank you. I was just concerned about the student that did have 101 temperature, what would happen to that student without a parent there, so you've answered that question.
Correct. Yes. Thank you to our drivers who've been so wonderful already.
Thank you for doing that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So how will we formulate the motion at this time? It looks like Dr. Bracy, if I'm correct, is asking for a little more time on the 6th through 12th to formulate a plan. But it seems that his plan for the K through 5 is pretty much steadfast. Is that correct? So we would have to formulate a motion to approve his K through 5 plan and put on the table his 6th through 12th plan. Is that correct, Mr. Malone?
Based upon he hasn't made a recommendation for 6th through 12th, I think we'll just take action on our pre-K, EC, K through 5 tonight.
And Dr. Bracy, it's not that you're reconsidering October 19th for 6th through 12th. It's just the number of cohorts that you're trying to figure out for 6th through 12th, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Just want to make sure everybody understood that.
So if I hear you correctly, Mr. Johnson, would you like to make that motion tonight?
Absolutely, I would.
Okay. So Mr. Johnson has made the motion. I'll just re-review that. Is basically we have pre-K and EC self-contained going back in on 9/28 is Dr. Bracy's recommendation, followed by our kindergarten students on October 12th through 5th grade, right? Oh, kindergarten students on October 12th and followed by 1st through 5th on October 19th. So that is his recommendation. Mr. Johnson has made a motion.
I'd like to second.
Second by everybody.
Can we, Michelle, I'll let you choose who you, second by the entire board. At this time, I'll, any questions or comments?
I do, I do have a question for Dr. Bracy. And I don't mean to put you on the spot. And you don't have to tell me a date, but can you give me a number of days? You say more time for 6th through 12th. Can, do you have like a?
I'm hopeful, Ms. Wooden, they can resolve that this week or early next week. I can communicate with the board, possibly as early as Friday possibly. Just want to give them a few more days to formulate that, those cohorts to be consistent with one another.
I understand. And that's a fair decision. I just don't want it to be drawn out because everybody needs to be back in school.
Agreed.
And if you need a special session, just holler at us. We're not doing too much next week. If you need us to come in to vote on that, you let us know.
And Dr. Coats had mentioned earlier that there might be a principal meeting to talk about best practices across the school because we do believe in site-based management. But at the same time, we are still hearing teachers saying, I'm teaching both face-to-face and virtual and my caseload is four times it was before we had to go face-to-face. So just some practices for our principals so we know what's working, or they know what's working great and how we can accommodate those teachers who have a heavy workload.
Certainly.
Well, and that we will continue to strive for consistency across grade level bands in terms of what virtual learning looks like.
Agreed. And if I could just, if I may have the last word. And you mentioned, Ms. Sesams, a little early about a learning curve for teacher, I'm sorry, for parents and students. There's a learning curve for our staff as well. This is new to us. And at our core, we are excellent face-to-face instructors. But we're learning how to be superb and excellent virtual instructors. So in essence, we've been doing this since August 17th in full-fledged view. So we're going to continue to get better at this because probably, and I go out on the limb and say this, virtual learning is here to stay in some form or fashion in public education. I think that is the case. Virtual learning is here to stay in some shape or fashion. But at our core, we are face-to-face instructors. But certainly, we embrace this challenge and we will give it our best and become very great at it, I assure you.
Dr. Bracy, I think you said there would never be another snow day. Is that what you said?
Unless the power lines come down.
And.
It has taught us to do a different way of thinking, not just in the school business, but in every business in the country. We found a way, a better, there's another way of doing things, but I don't want to go through this again.
Well, I think that was shown to us a couple of years ago, do some flex days and those things are coming all the way back full circle.
And Dr. Bracy, that's why.
Hold on one second, I hadn't finished. And so that being said, we were taught some things a couple of years ago that are, and I'm hearing great things from that particular school, from what they're doing and what they learned back then.
And Dr. Bracy, that's why I was saying it's so crucial that we get that feedback from those teachers as soon as possible because they're the ones that know the struggles that they're having. They know the successes, they know the failures and they can share those with everybody.
I agree.
And I echo what Ms. Zukowski said about consistency. Some teachers in some schools are being told they cannot record. I find that hard to believe for children who aren't there during class. So just making sure that just the little things are clear and that if they do record their certain protocols, I mean, that needs to come from a consistent protocol from the district that says, here are some best practices. We talked about that before. And just making it simple. I'm a simple-minded person and it doesn't need to be that complicated, but just making sure that it's clear to everybody and that we're doing the same thing across the district. And I don't mean the same thing, the same protocol, that the...
The things that need to be understood are understood by everybody there.
Understood.
Dr. Bracy, I would just like to thank you and your leadership team of coming up with this additional plan. And Mr. Johnson, did I?
Oh, no. I was just asking, are you ready to vote?
That's what I'm getting at. Yes, absolutely. I would love to entertain a vote at this time. Thank the leadership team. Thank you, Dr. Bracy, for coming back up with this recommendation tonight. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 7-0. We will take a five-minute break. Ms. Gill.
Good evening again, Chairman Sutton, Lady Vice Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Bracy. It's once again a pleasure to be with you. And my item is Board Exhibit 8C2. This is our second presentation regarding boundary lines. And one of the primary goals this evening is to give you a summary of the stakeholder input as well as to give you some revisions. And I think you have those at your tables today. And Mr. Miller and Mr. Dudley are back with us and they will guide you through these. And then we can talk some more about where we want to go as next steps. Johnston County Public Schools will be opening, and it's exciting, an elementary school utilizing our vote, our voter-approved bond 2018 funding. And this school is due to open in the fall. In order to fill the seats, we are needing to work on our boundary lines. We've had one opportunity to hear these gentlemen. We did have a virtual community and parent engagement meeting that was held to elicit feedback on concerns related to the plan. This information was given to ORED and Numerics who have now compiled this data from the meeting and will be reporting in their presentation regarding this data. And additionally, they will provide some possible changes to the boundary lines from the initial presentation. And the Operations and Communications Department would like to, again, to introduce Mr. Mike Miller and Mr. Thomas Dudley, who are here to take you through their presentation. And then any questions that we have at the end or along the way, I'm sure we'll be happy to entertain. So I'm going to turn it over at this time to both of you.
Welcome back to both of you.
Thank you very much. Tonight we'll be looking at draft number two of attendance boundaries to be effective school year 2021, '22, including a new elementary school on Lynch Road. This is the second draft. After this process, you'll have about a month to deliberate and discuss and ask, ask questions about the scenarios and the data. And we appreciate the questions that we have already heard from the board and from community members via the community survey. Couple points about the community survey. First is, I applaud your communications department. This process, at least from our vantage point, went seamlessly. They were excellent in helping set the survey up, in providing us with regular data outputs, and then in compiling the final data. So applause to them. They did a great job. There were a total of 659 survey responses of that total. 613 were parents, there was four students responding, and 42 community, community members. The questions they were asked were related to draft one, which you saw a presentation of last month. Not sure I can read all these numbers from that far away, but there's no reason for that. This is how those 613 parent responses broke down. A lot from Archer Lodge Middle School, from Riverdale Elementary and Riverwood Middle, and then Riverwood Elementary, those seem to be the outliers. In the addendum of this presentation, there is some additional output, more of a general, including all 659 responses. What I thought I would do for a few slides is drill down to individual school responses. For example, if we look at Cooper Academy and the parents of children at Cooper Academy, there's a total of 65 responses. This particular question asked them to rank the three goals of maintaining neighborhood schools, which is the red color, maintaining elementary, middle, and high school feeder patterns, that's the yellow color, and relieving overcrowding, which is the blue color. And for Cooper Academy, one of the more unusual things about this particular result is the first goal, more or less evenly distributed. We thought that was interesting. We're not going to see that in, in data from other schools. For the Riverdale Elementary parents, we had 155 responses. And here, by far the majority thought that relieving overcrowding was their first goal, followed by maintaining neighborhood schools, and finally, looking at clean feeder patterns. This is the message, if you have one takeaway from this scenario and this question, this is the message that remains consistent for most of the parents and for the survey in Archer Lodge Middle School, 122 responses, along the same lines, relieve overcrowding, maintain neighborhood schools, and finally, maintain clean feeder patterns. Riverwood Middle School parents, it's understandable that they think that relieving overcrowding is even larger, or an even larger section of the respondents responded as their first goal, followed by maintaining neighborhood schools and feeder patterns. One of the later questions on the survey was, after reviewing these attendance boundaries, I believe the following, and they were given these four choices. This is all parents, meaning 613 responses, all parents. Forty-five percent of them said that attendance boundaries are acceptable as presented, so they agreed with draft one. Followed by 25% said that my school is not getting enough relief from overcrowding, followed by 17% saying my school is being overly affected by the proposed boundary changes. And finally, 14% said my school should not be a part of the attendance boundary changes.
Is that for middle school and elementary combined?
Yes, ma'am. All parents.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I, when you reflect, when you're referring to version, I mean, excuse me, draft one, is that version one that we have here?
Yes, sir. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. The map you have in front of you, there are two different versions for elementary schools. Draft one is called version one now, just to distinguish. And finally, just one more piece from the survey. There, the final question was, what are specific concerns that you would like for us to know regarding the proposed attendance boundaries? And this provided a space for them for a long answer. And more than half provided, provided information in this, in this category. And I've just picked out a couple from, from all sides here. We need an additional middle school built immediately. They're overcrowded and will only grow over time. A parent said they were concerned with changing schools after we had purchased a house to attend a specific school. That's something we hear a lot when we're looking at changing attendance boundaries. Understandable. The third, I am very happy with the change, just which parents had the option to move students this year, kind of a preemptive transfer, if you, if you will. Cooper Academy is much closer to the Cobblestone area than East, than East Clayton. We love our school and do not want to change. This has been our school for years. We did see a number of comments specifically about Cobblestone, the Cobblestone area. Riverwood Middle School is not receiving noticeable relief and building in the district is still happening. Class sizes prior to the pandemic were out of control. And finally, from this select group, proximity and attendance at the closer schools should be a higher, a high factor, a higher factor. So interesting comments. They, they spanned all the way from this, this plan is fine, don't change anything, to some of the comments said, leave us alone. So at this point, we'll, we'll talk about using the feedback we got from board members a month ago and feedback we have gleaned from the community service and present you with draft two. Draft one is a starting point for any revisions you're going to see tonight. And again, those revisions are based on the community input and the board feedback from a month ago. This slide is unchanged from draft one. This is the current status for elementary schools. Six elementary schools will be impacted by these attendance boundary changes. And just to refresh your memory, we're looking at the utilization as our metric as we compare these scenarios. And one more point about this, the average utilization right now with Selma as a K4 is 107%. The estimated average utilization, including the new school, in five years will be 103%. So unfortunately, the new school is not going to solve all the crowding problems. This slide is identical to the draft one. There's no changes in this. I'm calling it version one because you're going to see a version two. This map is also reproduced on a paper form in front of you. My little, there it is. The little red circle there. I can't see it. Let me pull it up here. That's not helping very much at all. For version one, we're looking at a 2021 brick-and-mortar utilization ranging from 108% utilization at Cooper, down to 84% at the Thanksgiving area elementary school. I'm going to toggle back and forth between version one, which is draft one, and version You'll see a marked change in the northern part of the Thanksgiving area elementary, colored in yellow. To counter that move back to Riverwood, there is an additional piece of Thanksgiving area elementary, just, just below, just south of 42. For version two, since a lot of these changes were more give and take, for lack of a better term, so if I moved something, if the planning team moved something in one district, we had to counter that with movement on the other side. There's not enough room to do otherwise. The range of utilization expected in 2021 is 108% at Cooper Academy, which was not impacted by these changes, to 86, 85%, my, my apologies, at East Clayton.
Quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
When I opened East Clayton, Rollingwood was in my district, which was right beside Cooper. That has since been redistricted to Cooper, is that correct?
I'm going to have to, I can't off the top of my head remember exactly.
Thank you.
Yeah. There was some changes between East Clayton and Cooper. In that particular area, there's no difference between draft one and draft two, though. I'm certain of that. For the middle school, again, this is a slide that's a replicate of our draft one presentation. This is current attendance boundaries for middle school, comparing utilization at 107% for both Archer Lodge and Riverwood, and a minimum of 74% utilization at Clayton. The average utilization last year over these three middle schools is 99%. And the estimated average utilization in five years is 106%. The proposed attendance boundaries represent a change from draft one. So these maps are different from what you saw last time. Archer Lodge Middle School is no longer impacted by any changes in draft two. The utilization for 2021 is 114% at a high for Archer Lodge, down to 96% for Clayton. Again, the only two schools that are impacted by draft two are Clayton and Riverwood. Any questions on that one? As in draft one, I think it's important to give you a, a view of how these two systems lay on top of each other. So using elementary version one with the draft two middle school, it's hard to keep all those up in the air at the same time. The blue line represents the proposed middle school boundaries. The colors represent the proposed elementary boundaries. And I will go through the feeder patterns. Corinth Elementary, clean feeds to Archer Lodge. In this scenario, the Thanksgiving area elementary, clean feeds to Arthur Lodge, Archer Lodge. And Riverdale, clean, clean feeds to Archer Lodge. And Riverdale clean feeds to Archer Lodge. Cooper clean feeds to Clayton Middle School. East Clayton goes to three middle schools, Clayton, Riverwood, Archer Lodge. And Riverwood splits to two middle schools, Riverwood and Archer Lodge. Again, in draft two, the middle school lines did not change for Archer Lodge. Using exactly the same middle school lines, but now the colors represent the second version of the elementary school. Corinth Holders, again, clean feeds to Archer Lodge. Riverdale clean feeds to Archer Lodge. And Cooper clean feeds to Clayton. East Clayton splits to three middle schools, Clayton, Riverwood, Archer Lodge. Thanksgiving area elementary school now does have a little piece that's split to Riverwood Middle School. And Riverwood splits from Riverwood Middle School to Archer Lodge. Selma is also a clean feeder, and I did not mention that. So at this time, if you have any questions, hopefully I can.
So did the attendance boundaries change at all for Selma Elementary?
Not from draft one. No, ma'am. They now, on the southern boundary here, I can't see that, on the southern boundary, they now align with the Selma middle school line.
No offense, I would personally, I want to hear from Mr. Moore and Ms. Gill, if that's okay, being that they're very familiar, they work in the district day in and day out. Do you have a model here that you would recommend? I know that's kind of putting you on the spot, and I don't know if you're comfortable to say, but you work in this day in, day out. This is your job. So do you have any model, or any draft, or any version that you would recommend above all else? And can you give the reasoning behind that?
With, pardon me if I'm saying it incorrectly, but with the middle school, the only option that you have is either cobblestone or not. Is that right?
Basically, yes.
Right. So, you know, if you're going to give, and if you're going to listen, and we should, to what our stakeholder said, they wanted us to look at decreasing capacity, overcrowding at Riverwood. The only way to do that is to, you've got the same number of kids. You've got to, it's not going to help Archer's Lodge in this situation, but it would help Riverwood some. So if you're going to look at it that way, from a middle school perspective, you don't have very many options with how a middle school is laid out, except to, if you, if you, we're in the toughest situation with Riverwood, you've got to go ahead and do the only option that you really have that's presented. And that's to, unfortunately, we are, we're putting 12 classrooms, right, Brooks? 12 classrooms, you can come up here, too. Get on up here. Don't be shy. That's right. Where's the, so we are adding the additions on there, but remember, that utilization number was still high, even with putting the, what that means is mobile units won't go away, even when you add. So what does that mean? It means that long-term conversation we've got to have about getting more land and finding another middle school site and continuing to consider building, which I have an appointment with Dr. Bracy to talk about the next stages that we've talked about that. So you've got the same number of kids, they've got to be somewhere. But if you're in the most urgent situation from a middle school perspective, that would be my recommendation. Brooks, do you have any dissenting opinion? Because he certainly tells me how he feels about that. From an elementary perspective, it really kind of comes down to grabbing that little section up at the top. Remember that the reason we wanted to grab, and I don't know how to get back to that, can you get back to that? Remember that your option there was, it looked like that the Thanksgiving area school was going to have a lot bigger attendance boundary, but remember, the kids were so spread out. So we asked, you know, that was one of the things, when you take that out of play right there, you know, that's impacting who again? I forget. Right. So, you know, from our perspective, if you, we're looking to try to open that school up with as much capacity as we can, and try to relieve as much overcrowding as we can. So that's the reason why that was the original design, was to grab up as many kids as we could. So our recommendation from mine would be that you go back and grab up the top section, because that's what the data clearly showed. But at the same time, now remember, this is a decision that I can't make, you guys are going to have to make that decision. But, I mean, is it doable either way with that little spot up there? It is, and for those parents and students affected, that's a big deal for me to say that, because I'm not emotionally tied to that section. But if you're looking at it from purely utilization standpoint, that's what we're trying to do, is get Thanksgiving as full as we can.
And based on these two charts?
That's the one that shows that.
Yes, ma'am.
And then the next one would be the one that, correct. Now, didn't the one where we, one of them left East Clayton with two feeder patterns rather than three? Isn't that correct?
That was a middle school scenario. So that is no longer a part of draft two.
Right. Right.
And forgive me for not keeping pace with all the information, but how would this, these two particular drafts, impact the Selma E, Selma E, as Terry mentioned?
Selma E situation is more just cleaning up the fact that those kids literally live across the road, and that's a neighborhood school scenario. So up there where Lynch Road is, when you jump across the road coming back here towards Wilson's Mills, those kids, their closest school is actually going to be Thanksgiving. So that's more cleanup work for them, and clean feeder patterns for them, right?
Yes. It's also trying to balance the change from K4 to K5 that Selma E is seeing this year.
Brooks.
How many students is that? Do you know, Ms. Gill?
You know how many kids it is?
150.
Brooks, do you want to, you're in all these meetings with us. Did I summarize it, or you want to say some?
I'd like to add one.
Come on up.
If I could, I'd like to preface my opinion with, there's a tremendous amount of data that goes into what the computers have given you. So my opinion, everyone's one's opinion is our opinion, but what you have, these proposed maps are supported from a tremendous amount of data. Current build, new builds, construction coming online and all. But I personally was happy to see version two, that kind of retracted Thanksgiving back from the Archer Lodge area, because I feel confident that we'll have no problem filling that school very quick. And I don't want to be putting mobiles there in a year. I might be, but I hope not. So I do like that we pulled Archer Lodge back.
Well, they keep building houses, you can keep getting mobiles. That's kind of how that works. But thank you, Mr. Moore. Thank you, Ms. Gill.
Do any, Brooks, does any of the data, talk about any demographic data? Do we look at any of the diversity or socioeconomic status of parents and students?
Do you have a report in your packet somewhere about that?
It is not in the presentation. I couldn't, I did not include that Friday, so what you're looking at was just produced today. It's an eight and a half by 11 sheet, I believe.
While they're looking at that, Mr. Moore, you referring to filling that up pretty quick, based upon Highway 39, right there at Antioch, there's a new subdivision already broke ground, and going back that way, by pulling back up at the Archer Lodge area, what's happening right there on 39 will accommodate for the decrease that we're pulling back there, it'll increase pretty rapidly.
Correct. Yes, sir. And also, there's a tremendous amount that's approved, that's coming up 96 as well, that 'll kind of divide, and some will come to the new school, and then some will stay with Corinth Holders Elementary.
Thank you, sir.
Am I correct in, I hate to say assuming, but what Ms. Lukowski brought up, based on these school feeder patterns, or how we're going to fill the school, the diversity ratio is not going to change that much? Am I correct in saying that?
Variation of maybe four points on a maximum.
Yes, I'm looking at this report, and thank you for including that data. I am concerned that we have such a variance from one school to another in terms of diversity, or lack thereof. And I was hoping that we would be able to do something that would make that a more balanced approach, because the research is very strong in terms of the benefits that all students, academic as well as behavioral benefits, that all students receive in a more diversified environment.
And that's a very formalized way to present that, but in a very subjective manner. If you have Ms. Rosado, Mr. Baker, or Mr. Allen as your principal, you are winning. I mean, you are getting a good hand with that kind of leadership. There's some of the best principals in the county, in the state for that matter. So I would agree, I would like to see something along the lines that, which could increase those points. I mean, I think we can do a little something different, but, you know, I hate to circumvent the computer outlay. We have 30 days to decide this. Is that correct?
Correct.
I have a couple of pages of notes. I actually read all 83 pages of comments, and some were duplicates, you know, that you would check which school, and some people had multiple schools. But I want parents to know that they were heard, and so I'm going to talk about a few things, if you don't mind. Parents were concerned about slowing growth. I am familiar with growth. We opened in 97 and split five times in 11 years at East Clayton, so growth has been a huge impact. But I can also say that in those five splits, if you look at the five schools, McGee's split with Cleveland, we split with Cleveland. I mean, Cleveland went to McGee's, we went to Cleveland. Riverwood, Riverdale, Palenta, Palatane, not one of those schools has suffered academically because of the shift. So I want parents to understand that academics, and that's their concern, I want my child to get the same education at this school that I would have gotten at that one, that will not suffer. The second thing is, it's not up to the Board of Education to stop growth. That is completely without our purview. We just take the students that we get and do the best that we can. We need to get plans on the books for new middle and high schools, as well as elementary. I do want parents to know that that is a concern of ours, but again, we have no funding authority to do that. It must come through the bond process through the county commissioners, and we're very grateful for the commissioners who have been willing to address our building needs. Again, growth is not a Board of Education control. We take those who come and educate them. And then some equate poverty and low performance. There are case study after case study that refute this. It's a generalization. Consider Dr. Bracy's Sampson County, which had not only poverty, but high numbers of non-English speakers. They went from 115 to 15 in six years, and that was because of high expectations and rigorous instruction. So I don't want people to think that anybody is relegated to low academic achievement. I totally believe in neighborhood schools, and again, it depends on high expectations and rigorous instruction. And I want people to be assured that Johnston County will not settle for second rate, particularly under Dr. Bracy's leadership. So thank you for letting me have my say.
Any other questions so far?
That's basically the end of the draft two presentation, but I would like to call your attention to one of the maps in front of you. The, some of the comments in the community survey are things that people that do this for a living hear a lot. You know, why aren't we sent to the closest school? Why aren't the lines lining up nice? All these kinds of things that you would hope, in a perfect world, a school district could accomplish. This map right here, the kind of clean one, is student density. So the little purple blobs that you see correspond to the number of students in a particular area. The darker the blob, the more the students are. So one of the reasons that you sometimes cannot send children to the closest school is because they're not spread out evenly everywhere. You've got incredibly dense areas in this county, and you can see the dark purple spots there representing those. And you have a lot of open land, where there's very few students per unit area. So those are some of the challenges. I have used these maps to educate boards in the past about some of the challenges in front of you when you're making these decisions, and hopefully you will find that a little helpful in explaining to your constituents.
If there's no other questions for any of our folks, our next steps is that we will again take any feedback that you have, and I believe that we, if need be, come back again for the final time, or is, but that would be where we would be looking to go in October. And then from that, you can see the additional work we need to do to get the school up and running.
Thank you, Ms. Gill. Thank you for Numerex and OREAD coming back tonight and bringing us the updated versions, and we look forward to October finalizing these, and so we can move forward with everything that needs to be done from facilities and everybody else's departments that are involved.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Sutton, Lady Vice Chair, Dr. Smith, Dr. Bracy, members of the board. I have eight items tonight. They're all for information, so they'll go pretty fast. The first one is Board Exhibit 8A4. It is Policy Code 4100, Reassignments. And this basically is just an adjustment to allow the superintendent to reassign students to cap schools based on hardships. The next four policies are Board Exhibit 8A5 through 8A8. And I'd put those together in a group, because every one of those policies are being put up for information due to the Title IX changes that the federal government set down in May. And all these policies are being provided for information for revisions based on Title The next policy will be 8A9. This policy is Policy Code 4700, Maintenance Review and Release of Student Records. This policy is being revised to update what we're currently going through with remote learning, which is including the definition of directory information with audio and video that we are taking in our virtual classes. And this is presented for information. Policy Code 3450, Graduation Requirements, which is 8A10, is based on recommendations where the state has changed the course requirements. And so this one is being presented for information based on the state's updated requirements. And then our last one is Policy Code 4230, which is being recommended by the School Board Association, Communal Diseases for Students, based on the updated information from our Health Department and the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, and it aligns pretty much with our current Johnson County Schools policy. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Pierce, and we look forward to these coming back next month. But we appreciate everything you guys are doing in policy to make sure we're up to speed on all of our policies.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you. And our visitors are getting their temperatures scanned as they come in. I am really happy to stand before you with something really fun and good news to talk about tonight. Item 7B1 is the Triple S Robotics Cube SAT Initiative. And I don't want to take much of their time, so I am going to turn this over to one of the sponsors of the Triple X, Triple S Robotics Team, Ms. Angela Jenkins, and let her take it away. and let her take it away.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Angela Jenkins. I work with the Triple S Robotics Team. And so this is our CubeSat team. And I'm going to let them, go ahead, because I'm not taking time from them. They have prepared a presentation for you. And I'm going to let you come see and hear from them and hear all of their work.
Hi, I'm Sloan Mann. I'm a seventh grade homeschooler and the youngest member of the FFX First in Orbit CubeSat Team. Tonight, we are going to tell you who we are, what a CubeSat is, how this team impacts Johnston County, and ask you to help us in spite of these challenging times. But first, I want you to think about what you wanted to be when you were my age. A teacher? A doctor? An engineer? An astronaut? Chances are that you or your parents had the opportunity to watch history being made in 1969 when NASA put a man on the moon. Tonight, we don't want you to watch history being made, but rather, we want you to help us make history. We have a chance to go to Kennedy Space Center to learn more from NASA scientists, but we need your support. Here's Bennett to tell you more about our team.
Hi, my name is Bennett Nasmento, and I'm an 11th grader at Cleveland High School. Our team currently consists of 15 members, and we all met through First Robotics, the largest STEM-based competition in the world for K through 12. We are accepting, we accept students from many different schooling systems and all across the county, and we are still recruiting. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for us as students. We were the first CubeSat team in North Carolina to successfully launch a CubeSat. Prominent universities and groups like NC State, Collins Aerospace, and Seymour Johnson Air Force Base haven't done it yet. We will be among prominent universities, research groups, and tech companies when our CubeSat launches in a few years. When we first started this project, we talked to an M9 Reaper pilot and an Aero-Aster engineer who both work for the Artificial Intelligence Accelerator at MIT. Working with professionals is only the start of what we will be doing in the coming years. We will be learning from across the country, from professionals, and doing amazing things in engineering and technology as we build our program. Now, you might be wondering, what is a CubeSat? Well, let's find out from Ethan.
My name is Ethan Carroll, and I am a homeschooler in the 10th grade. And I'm here today to help explain what a CubeSat is. First off, what is the difference between a CubeSat and an ordinary satellite? The answer is their size. CubeSats are pretty small with a volume of about one quart and a weight of typically less than three pounds. These CubeSats you see here are called 1U CubeSats. The U stands for unit, which is equal to 1,000 cubic centimeters. The purpose of a CubeSat can be anything the creator wants. However, since this is going to be part of NASA's CubeSat Launch Initiative, our satellite will address one or more of NASA's goals, such as increasing our knowledge of the universe or aiding in the expansion of human presence in our solar system. NASA's CubeSat Launch Initiative has allowed many people in schools to have the opportunity to launch CubeSats into space. Students designing, building, and testing CubeSats takes about two to three years. The first step in this process is looking into NASA's call for proposals. This will help us know what NASA wants our CubeSat to accomplish. The next step involves you. FFX First in Orbit needs permission to go to Florida in mid-October to meet and talk with NASA astronauts, sorry, NASA scientists for proposal review. After that, we will submit our idea to NASA in November. And in February of 2021, NASA will announce which CubeSats they will fly. We have some ideas for our CubeSat, ranging from using super-lightlight porous materials to examine space debris, to determining the radiation risk from other satellites. Our ideas will help both NASA and mankind. But what will it do for Johnston County? Here's Rebecca for more on that.
My name is Rebecca Jenkins. I'm a junior at Smithfield-Tama High School. Almost 2,000 CubeSats have been launched since 1999, and 29 states have participated so far. Wolfpack, a Floridian team that has previously launched two CubeSats with NASA, has decided to mentor a Nebraskan team and our team because neither state has ever launched a CubeSat into space before. The three teams have decided to collaborate and allow our CubeSats to communicate in space as they gather data. Johnston County is becoming more and more focused on biotechnology. This is a historic opportunity that will allow us to communicate with leaders in engineering, biotechnology, and aerospace. We will have a chance to work with scientists all across the country. Grifols and Novo Nordisk are companies that are becoming more and more prominent in this community. And we will have the opportunity to meet with scientists and become more prepared to take over these companies and help them improve. We will, if you allow us to go, you will be helping prepare the next generations of leaders. Now you know more about our team, what we're doing and why we exist. Here is James to help you explain how you can be vital to the community.
My name is James Akerson. I'm a sophomore on the FFX Robotics Team. Basically, in this time of crisis, where opportunities we once took for granted are now limited and restricted. And even our education system is exploring new ways to continue teaching with COVID. COVID is indeed a colossal hindrance to everyone right now. But in this time of crisis, I believe we could accomplish something that's never been done before for our state. We have the opportunity to become the first CubeSat team in North Carolina. And to go to Kennedy Space Center in late October to work with NASA scientists in order to develop and contribute to our CubeSat. And during the August 17th Special School Board Meeting, Mr. Johnson, you said that there are risks associated with everything in life. At the end of the day, it's all about choice. This is indeed a risk and is indeed not only a choice, but an opportunity. What would have happened if, say, other historical figures were not granted an opportunity? The clip's not going to play. But it's basically a summary of a clip from the movie Hidden Figures in which an African-American woman went up to a judge and basically obtained voting rights for African-Americans, which was indeed a colossal step in society. As Bennett previously mentioned, there are phenomenal tech programs in North Carolina that specialize for things such as advancements in technology and for medicine. But we in Johnston County have been selected to become the first CubeSat team. We have been given this opportunity to become the first. We have the opportunity for our state, for our county, for ourselves. We have been given this rare and substantial opportunity from NASA to become the first. And I want to just thank you guys for even peering us tonight, especially with COVID. I just want to thank you guys concerning how your decision tonight impacts our futures tomorrow and how we proceed with our CubeSat. We'll take any questions if you have them.
I guess, how can we assist?
Basically, all we're asking for is permission to go to Kennedy Space Center around October 30th because we have been invited and with two other teams, Nebraska and Wolfpack, to collaborate and present our proposal for CubeSat to NASA.
I mean, I think we got our own little space race going here. So let's get this done. I don't think anybody will stand in your way. And for the record, this is the first time a student has called me out. You're in great company, my friend. Thank you.
Board, any other questions for any member or the advisor?
I just noticed you have Triple S, Cleveland, North Johnston, Newshaw, JCC Early College, and homeschoolers. So how did all of you, young ladies and young men, get together? How'd you figure out you wanted to do this? How did you form the Avengers, basically? Explain that to me.
All right. So basically, we are connected through a First Robotics Program. It's the largest STEM-based competition in the world. We have other schools who we are in contact with and even homeschool kids that we basically collaborate with, and they join our team and help us out. And the CubeSat came to FFX Robotics, and we decided to collaborate with neighboring schools and basically just come together to do this amazing goal.
Dr. Bracy, the only thing they did when I was in school was take me to the planetarium. I think we've made leaps and bounds. Thank you, young man.
Yeah, no problem.
Mr. Chairman, you know, we're letting sports teams practice, and this is a robotics team. I think we need to support this 100%.
I am in agreement with you, Mr. Wooton. And I think they had me sold as soon as they started speaking. I wanted to go with them, so.
So do we need a motion, Mr. Chairman?
I'll entertain a motion to assist these young men and women to go to NASA.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Wooton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries 7-0.
And best wishes.
Thank you guys so much. Thank you.
They are fundraising to go. So if you have any dollars to share, they will take them. We'll have to pass around an offer plate.
And then we're also, like, we need experts. So as we build the satellite, they've got to build, they have to actually build a satellite. They have to program it, circuitry, circuit boards, all of that. So as we move forward with it, there's a lot of experts. So if you want to shoot some experts our way or anybody we need to talk to that we can build relationships to help us out with knowledge, that would be great. Because these kids are already learning from MIT and the Air Force. And we've got a lot of people who are like, hey, we'll help these kids out. You know, kids bring experts out of everywhere.
Well, it's refreshing to see young adults come in and present themselves the way they did and the presentation they offered us. It means you're building not only educational background, but character. And they presented themselves very well. I'm impressed.
I have one, one thing I would like to ask is once you all go and receive all this great information from NASA, scientists, and everything, we would welcome you all back to present back to us what you've, what you learned.
They plan to. We're going to do a whole presentation of what they learned, taking video down there, taking photographs. This is a once-in-a-lifetime. There's, NASA didn't, doesn't invite other teams. There's only three teams that NASA's inviting. It's the three working together because one reason, two teams, two states have never flown into space before with a CubeSat, North Carolina and Nebraska. The other one, we're going, we're wanting to achieve what's never been done. We want our satellites all to be in the same rocket. And when they launch us into space, our satellites are going to fire up and talk to each other, and that's never been done. So NASA's like, let's take that idea. Y'all come down here, let's talk to all you three teams. So Nebraska's going to be there, Wolfpack and Florida's going to be there. We're going to be there, First in Orbit. And they want to talk to all of us, and they want to talk to these kids, and they want to help them achieve their goal. And of course, they can't do that with experts. So NASA's like, y'all need to just come on down here. You need to, you need to sit in front of our engineers and learn from us. And we're going to help make, we're going to make your dreams come true. So they're partnering with us to make these kids' dreams come true.
So your brochure says more than 15. Are all 15 planning to attend?
We have 17 that are traveling. The team has now grown to 30 because the word keeps getting out. We started with asking the robotics teams in the county, do you have kids that would be interested in aerospace and aeronautical engineering? And of course, they all lined up. But now that the word is getting out, more kids are like, oh, I love aerospace. And so I think we're only missing one high school at this point in the county. But we have kids from all over different schools and middle schools because the more this gets out, the more kids are like, this is, I want to study this. I want to be a part of this. I mean, we never get this. So the team's at 30 right now, but I'm only taking 17. Now, when we launch, if satellites, if NASA says in February, y'all going to space, that means we're building a satellite, and all the kids are going to be flying there when they launch. And every kid's going to sit there and touch it and put it in there. And it's going to be a huge event for our state and for our county.
And you'll, you'll share that with all the other high schools in the district?
Yes, yes.
Great job.
Yes, thank you.
Y'all, y'all travel safe.
I know, I would, I told them I would have been on the Enterprise if I could have been. So I, I'm just so excited about that. And I'm so glad we had something really exciting to share. It was refreshing. Okay, the second thing and last thing for me is, gosh, I'm talking through that mask. Board Exhibit 7B2. Our legal counsel prepared this contractual agreement template for our school system to use. During remote learning, a lot of business organizations have offered to support our students in remote learning in summer day camp type environments where, where parents pay, but they're served and they have adults they're supervising like a daycare would, except they're just providing the support for remote instruction. Because they are not licensed as daycare providers, the Department of Health and Human Services is allowing them to provide this remote learning support, provided our superintendent is aware and signs permission because students are going to be there during a school day. So they're requiring this in lieu of having those agencies or businesses get licenses. So this template, if you approve this template, it would mean then as requests come in to provide this support, Dr. Bracy could inform you of that group, and he could sign the agreement without having to call the whole board together. As I said, this was prepared for legal counsel. And at this time, we do have three business organizations in our district who've asked to participate. One is the YMCA of the Greater Triangle area. Another is NICS, Flippin Kids in Clayton. I'm sure you're familiar with where that is. They, they usually have a lot of after-school and evening gymnastics things, but they have that big space during the day. And another is Gateway Center. Got that one today. So I've, even though this is the template, I've prepared those individual contracts and left them with Dr. Bracy. If you approve this process, and then of course, he would move forward by signing the three I've informed you about and then updating you as others come to light.
I'll entertain a motion. This is an action item.
Go move.
Motion by Ms. Grant, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions or comments regarding this contractual agreement template?
How widely will this be publicized to parents as to the availability of these services?
The businesses have to reach out to provide it. The Department of Health and Human Services has told the businesses they can't provide the support unless they have this agreement. So it's a support that the businesses will communicate that they're offering. It's nothing that we, we could, we could announce to the parents as we sign them, these are available, but I don't know if they have space or anything. It's just the businesses that announce it.
Well, my concern has been parents write us constantly saying how desperate they are for childcare and especially for people who can help their children during the day. And, and it seems like something like this needs to be widely publicized.
We can certainly publicize it. I just, I can publicize it's an option, and then they would have to reach out to the groups to see if they have space.
Correct.
Yes, I'll be glad to publicize the people, the businesses. Some are nonprofit, some are for-profit. But they're all covered under this agreement.
Any other questions?
Isn't it a great place that we live, that we have businesses out there that want to do this for our students?
Absolutely. There's a couple of other, you know, that are doing this too, but they haven't reached out to the school system. I know that my daughter's dance studio has retired teachers there every day. And they have kids in different classrooms, and they're assisting them with, with their virtual learning. So there's others out there that are utilizing, you know, and helping us with their space and things. So some of them are not reaching out, but they are, you know, helping our students. And I just appreciate each and every one of those as well.
They also have our local churches that are all reaching out to, with retired school teachers that are helping, so.
Yeah, yeah, we sure do. So it is great to live in a county that we have opportunities for our students. And a lot of them that are going unnamed, not unnoticed, because we appreciate each and every one of them. And if they would like to reach out to Dr. Coats and Dr. Bracy, they have, they're more than willing to have that opportunity. But we do appreciate all of our retired teachers and others that are assisting in these, you know, church daycares and things of that nature. And then these three that you mentioned tonight, so.
And Mr. Sutton, I want to give a shout out too to Dr. Bracy and his staff because as, as these various churches and daycare centers have reached out with questions and concerns and needs for technology, and this is Ms. Gill as well, they have delivered, hand-delivered devices. They have been there to program and make sure that the devices work. And, and really, just you all have just stepped in and done everything that you possibly could. If a daycare or a church said, we need this, you all have just done an amazing job reaching out to them and helping them out.
All the information I would need is the business name and address in order to complete one of these agreements. All the information I would need is the business name and address in order to complete one of these agreements.
Okay, I'll ask, I know the owner, I'll ask them if they would like to do that and get, get in touch with you as well. No other questions? I'll entertain a vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gill.
The next item that I have this evening is Board Exhibit 8C1, the sewer installation for our new elementary school. And it's always a treat to have Mr. Moore here because he can tell you more about sewers than you ever wanted to know. And, and all kidding aside, he takes care of all of the details and makes it look very, very easy when I know that it's not. So kudos to him always and he will give you some, some interesting details about this project because as you know, getting sewer out here to the school has not been the easiest task. But one of the things that I, is a previous discussion about the need for land. We have the opportunity with this sewer that we're doing to put another school on it, correct? And that is a unique opportunity. I'd love for us to be able to have some ongoing conversations. We talked about that joint meeting with the commissioners and beginning to talk about, you know, where potential pieces of property are and it's very unique that after we've invested in this, this sewer piece here, and this is the leg that's going to be from flower store all the way up to the school, that having that opportunity at another school would be very, very unique and helpful. So what I'm bringing before you this evening is our need to get your approval for the bids that we received on August 19th related to who was going to do that last leg of sewer. The project is the remaining section. It will have an onsite pump station. That was not included in the portion recently added to the Department of Transportation's Highway 42 project. You've seen all that work going on up and down 42. And we did do a request for proposals. It was advertised. You'll see the five bids that were received on August 19th and our lowest bidder for Providence Construction of Clayton. Before we bring it for a vote for you, I'd like to ask Mr. Moore to come up and just tell you just a little bit about how that project is going because it is unique and then if, we'll ask for your approval if we can. Mr. Moore?
Good evening. Once, once again, yes, I, I can talk all things about sewer. Want to know pumps, lines, relief valves, all of that stuff. No, this is, this is kind of, once it started, it seemed easy, but then there's a DOT project going, 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 going on. We can't just run, run the line through there, so we brought, brought them in and got that added to their project. We had to work with their design teams and then outside of that, it's got to tie to our school and, and then tie to the county, county system. So this, this, it's kind of been, been, been a web and a mix, but it's all, this is the last piece, so. If anyone has any, any questions, I'll, I'll spare, spare you the details.
We, before we go into the questions, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve this contract and then we'll have questions and comments.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Wooton. Now, do we have any questions or comments for Mr. Moore or Ms. Gill? I don't think any of us know much about sewer systems there, Mr. Moore. So if there are no questions or comments, I'll, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven zero.
Also in your board, board pack is, is up to date to the current bond project finances, including this sewer addition to the new school, so any questions with that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
There's Mr. Vetrano. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Vetrano.
Yes, sir. Glad to be here. I know you had sent me a text and asked for a few updates and I'm glad to share with you what I was able to pull. I think one thing that you asked, Mr. Sutton, was retirements thus far this school year since June the 1st. And we've had 26. That compares to last year, the same timeframe, about 10. I also took the liberty just to look at resignations the last five years because I know you were specifically asking retirement, but I thought it might cause some of us to just look a little bit further. So we have averaged about 185 resignations the last four, previous four school years and that's from June 1st through September 8th, not, not the entire school year, just from that time period. So last year was a little bit lower at 150, but the year before that was 215, the year before that about 215. Right now, in that timeframe for this school year, 250. So we are seeing an uptick in that number during that timeframe. Resignations as a whole and also with retirements going from 10 last year during that timeframe to 26. That's all employees. Yes, ma'am. And then accommodations, we're at 375 right now. I think the last time you met, we were hovering around 350. And about 75% of those requests are from certified employees and about 80% of those are for teleworking. So I, I think that's some of the information that you had asked.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to come and share those updates with you.
When you say 80% are, are for teleworking, what are the other 20%?
Could be for additional PPE, personal protective equipment. Some are asking for additional measures such as a separate setting or additional space. I think that the governor and CDC recommends at least six feet, but there's some who've, based on information from their medical provider, indicating more space than that. So some request, and again, some for teleworking depend on whether students are in session or whether it's just adults. So some have said that they can be at the site while other adults are there, but based on recommendations from their healthcare provider, when students are in session, that they need to be teleworking.
Are these 375 employees who have qualified for medical accommodations, are, is this an addition to teachers who are also being quarantined?
Right. This is not based on quarantine. This is based on individuals identifying themselves as high-risk themselves or that they live with someone who is high-risk. So in, in addition to, to that, then you also have individuals because maybe they've been exposed either in the workplace or somewhere else. Could be a restaurant, it could be a place of faith. It could be a lot of places that they are having to quarantine for a period of at least 14 days. So that, that's separate from these accommodations that Human Resources has processed.
What do our ECT teacher numbers look like?
As far as vacancies are concerned, right now, we have seven at the elementary level and five and a half at the middle, high school level. So 12 and a half vacancies, ECT.
How many of those would you attribute are vacancies because those ECT teachers left us for COVID-related instances? And how, how do these vacancies stand up? I guess is what I'm trying to say as to what we've had in the past.
Okay. So in the past, this time of the year, between 30 and 40 certified. And, and when I say certified, that's all not necessarily a classroom position. Could be a counseling position, could be instructional support. Right now, we're 52, so between 50 and 60 compared to 30 to 40. So again, a little bit higher than what we've seen in past years, the same as resignations and retirements.
From a human resources point of view, how do you see these, this number of medical accommodations impacting bringing kids back?
It will have an impact. At, at some schools, more so than others. Some schools have, the numbers have been, I guess for a lack of better term, clean. You have a, the number of students that have asked to, to be taught virtually versus the number of staff who are requesting teleworking work well, they align well. And at some schools, they don't, so we're having to work with our principals on putting measures in place. And sometimes it's looking at scheduling, sometimes it's looking at, do you need additional personnel? But those are things that we do every year, even above COVID-19. We're working with schools where maybe their ADM is a little above what their projected enrollment should be. In the case this year, we've been looking at some schools where their enrollment is actually less than what their projected ADM is. And right now, we've, we've kept the staffing there because if we were to pool those staff members just based on the ADM, it would challenge them even more so in, in coming back under a Plan B.
And then when we look at the social distancing restrictions that the governor's orders have put us under, how, you know, because I, I'm trying to think, how, how that impacts bringing everybody back? Because that's one of the concerns that our parents don't, you know, that they're having trouble understanding is why we just don't open up and, and bring everybody back for five days a week.
So I, I guess the, the best way to try to explain it is to, to look at this room. And if there were no limitations as far as how many students we could put in here with desks, we each may come up with a, with a number very quickly of just based on visualizing about how many students we could have in this room. But if we each had to social distance ourselves, which we are doing, six feet apart, it certainly limits the number of individuals you can have in, in one room. And so in a classroom and our schools, some of them vary as far as the, and, and Mr. Moore and Ms. Gill might be the, the experts on the square footage of a typical classroom based on grade level and so forth, but I know hearing from principals based on their measurements and, and plans that some classrooms, you may only be able to have 13 students in there. And so certainly knowing that, that presents some of the challenges that I think that you were referencing assessments as far as why, why don't we have all students back at one time on one day? And because we would have to social distance them. And if I, if I'm a classroom teacher and I have 28 students, I cannot fit all of them into my classroom. So even if I wanted all 28 of them to come on a Monday, I'd have to find space for the other half and I can't clone myself. So it might be me with 14 students in a TA. Of course, we all know that we do not receive funding for TAs K5. We only receive them for K3 and they're not one per classroom either. There's a formula for that. And so that's where the, the staffing challenges come is even if we wanted all of the, the kids, which we do want all of them to come back, but we want them to come back safely and we want them to be able to come back where they're supervised safely and they're being taught by someone who is qualified to do so.
Mr. Vetrano.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned staff challenges and not naming a specific school, but is there a specific school based on the current request for accommodations that could not open? First question. And that's just a yes or no. Second question, I, I mean, again, this word is going to be the new relationships relevance and innovation, but site-based management. Have we been in contact directly with principals or are there principals reaching out saying that based on staffing accommodations, we cannot do this? I mean, is there one particular school that stands out in mind? Is there multiple schools that would not be able to open based on staffing issues outlined by accommodation request?
So I know that there were three schools that, that come to mind for some challenges as far as the social distancing we're concerned. I think Westview, Palenta, Riverdale. But as has been said before, there's a lot of wonderful people in our school system that have great ideas and, and can become very creative and we all want to do what's best for students. And so the principals are the ones in the schools and we're here to support them and if they reach out to us and say that they need additional assistance, that's where we're working with them. I'm not aware of a specific school right now where we couldn't make it happen. Now, again, our goal is going to be when we're, when it, when we're presented with, we're coming back to school on this date, we're going to make it happen.
I love, I love that, that attitude right there, that make it happen. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Now, we're talking about Plan B though.
Correct, correct.
Yes, not Plan C.
With the, with the cohort.
Yes, uh-huh. So we're not talking about.
Was that what you were asking?
No, I, well, my, I understand that you're talking about moving all in, which would be, I mean, you're going to have to almost reach phase three to do that. But what I'm talking about is in our immediate future, what's right in front of us because I know there's some people watching at home and they're hearing these concerns and they'd be maybe mixing the concerns, but I just wanted you to say that we will, you just said it actually, we will make it happen and thank you, Vetrano.
So the reality is, and I don't want to stand up here and say something that's not accurate. There, there are challenges, there will be challenges with Plan B, but we are here to work with our principals and we're here to help them and guide them. Every department is, from facilities to curriculum to human resources, from finance office. I mean, we're all here to support and chip in in any way we can.
Dr. Bracy, has there been a defined date to where virtual learning will end? It's unlikely, but I'm just curious. Has there been a defined date set forth where virtual learning will end in the, in the realm of what we know now?
When you say end, when it's not offered at all?
Well, when it's not offered in this manner, when it's not offered is, okay, you have the option, stay at home or come to school. Is there a date in sight or have we just not reached that point yet?
Have not reached that point yet because we had said earlier that if we did come back face to face, we would still offer that virtual option to families.
Absolutely. I just didn't know if they had put out a projected date where that would be over. I realize that's unlikely, but I was just curious.
Thank you.
Yes, because, and I think a lot of families have that question and that's, that's kind of where I was going because I've had so many parents reach out and say, why can't you just bring everybody back five days a week? And, and it's not that we don't want to, but with the governor's social distancing, what you've just explained, if I can only have 13 kids in my classroom and I've got 22 on my roster, what do you do with other kids? And being a, a county where everybody is already, we've exhausted mobile units, there's just nowhere to put them. Am I correct in terms of trying to bring everyone back five days a week?
Correct. I know Riverdale was standing out. That's a school where we were looking at the option of, of another site if we were trying to get all of the students to, to come back in and, and complying with social distancing requirements.
And I know that I just got off my finger pointing soapbox about, you know, people pointing fingers, but until, until the governor lifts this restriction, this is the way it's going to be. I mean, that is the bottom line. Until the state says you can fill the school at capacity and, you know, plug, a lot of our schools are over capacity, so we can't even do half-capacity right because of the tremendous amount of growth we have here. But whenever you have those state restrictions, this is absolutely the most we can do and we're committed to doing it.
Right.
That's why we had to go three cohorts because of our student population. If we were to have all of them go back with the current restrictions, so for K12 is what I'm talking about.
Yes, sir. You're absolutely right.
So you're right. I mean, until those restrictions are lifted, we, we can't get everybody back in school every day.
But my, my last comment, unless you have other questions, is I, I know that we've talked a lot and we all have that goal of wanting children back in school. I think I mentioned last time we met, my son, who's in eighth grade, is at home and I want him back in school badly. But I, I also want to thank our community for their supports. I know, I know that they allow us to, or make us aware when there are concerns, but we've also received some praise. praise from our blackboard tips and so forth. And as we prepare to bring our students back, I just ask the community continue to be patient with us, because there will be some situations that come up where, because of an exposure, the teacher, the students may have to quarantine for 14 days. And I know that that'll be disruptive, but those are the types of things that we're just asking that people would be patient with us on, because our goal is to have them to come back, and we're going to make that goal. But we also ask for patience as we're working through this new territory. And I'm sure that there will be some of those disruptions that occur when we come back in.
Mr. Vetrano, I cannot emphasize strongly enough how important that patience and grace is. I've had some of these folks who have resigned reach out to me and tell me that, and these are teachers, that they just could not take the criticism any longer, that they were working 18-hour days, seven days a week to try to make it work, and they were neglecting their own children to do that. And they had to make a choice. And it just tears my heart up. So, you know, our teachers, all of our staff, every employee we have is working harder than they've ever worked in their lives, and it's not perfect. I would ask parents, if they're not satisfied, to please reach out to the teacher and the principal and work it out. You know, many times I have parents reach out to me, and I ask, have you spoken with a teacher? Well, no. That's the only way the teacher can adjust to make it work. And going on Facebook and making ugly comments about our teachers is running them off.
Right.
This, I promise, this will be the last thing I say tonight. I feel like I've taught more than ever. But my heart does go out to those teachers. Being from a profession where the majority of men and women who do it get criticized quite often in the name of whatever, my heart goes out to you, because a lot of good people leave my profession, and now they're leaving the education profession because of impatience, unnecessary ridicule, and my heart goes out to them. And thank you for what you're doing right now. If you are a teacher in Johnston County, you've probably had something out of the way said to you, and it's not your fault. You're just doing your job. Trust me, I know how that feels. And my heart goes out to you. Hang in there. The promises are made. We're just asking you to hold on. Thank you.
Yep.
Well, I can speak for a wife that's a teacher, and I've been off Facebook since middle of January, and it's been the best blessing I've ever done is get away from that negativity, because there's a lot of people being criticized in the areas of teaching, especially this time of what we're dealing with, and they do not deserve it. I echo what everybody has said tonight. They're working harder. I can vouch for one at home, and I know Mr. Wooton can too, and there's others. And ever since March, when we went out, I've heard a lot of teachers say they've worked harder in this part of their career than they've ever worked before. And I can truly see it. And we thank each and every one of them for what they're doing on a daily basis and nightly basis. I've spoke to teachers where they've been run out of their elementary schools at 6:00 PM, go home and cook dinner, and then they work till 12 or 12:30 at night and get up and do the same thing the next day. And so, you know, it's not going unnoticed. We hear it all the time, and we just want to say thank you. And thank you for coming in, Mr. Vetrano, even though we didn't have anything for you tonight.
That's okay.
But we appreciate the update that you brought to us, and thank you for everything your staff is doing as well.
They're a hard-working group. Thank you.
Absolutely. Mr. Britt?
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, Chairman Sutton and board members, Dr. Bracy. What a wide variety of topics we've had tonight. And now we get to end on budgeting and accounting. So I'll try to, yeah, I'll try to keep you awake during this time. So this, as many changes as we've had this year, this slide is, there are several slides in this presentation that's already outdated, because it changes daily of what we're working with. So, but just three topics tonight. The first one being our current financial position. And I'm going to talk quickly. I'm going to try to move through this, but feel free to jump in and interrupt at any time if you have a question or comment. Current financial position, our financial challenges, just a brief overview of our financial challenges, definitely not an in-depth look at that. And then looking at some efficiency improvements that we've implemented along the way. So first, talk about our financial position. So we ended 2020 somewhere around a $10 million, with a $10 million general fund balance. So that's quite a change from a year ago of where we're looking at. And so this is as of June 30th, so it was prior to my arrival. We're not, I don't have an exact number of where, because we're still working on some things like the pension liability, working with Orbit, determining what that number is. So, but once we finish the audit here this week, we'll have a really good idea of where we are. The result of, how did we get from being so far in the red to being on the positive? Well, there was quite a bit of changes over that, over the past year. This past year was a roller coaster. It was for every school district, especially Johnston County schools. But the big changes were, there was a tremendous concerted effort by the Board of Education to reduce cost, and that is reflected in that $10 million. There was also the emergency county funding that came into play, the wellness audit savings, it was over $1 million there. And then we had quite a bit of savings from the closure of schools due to COVID-19. So unintended consequences, or unintended consequence very negative for students, but for the bottom line, we saved quite a bit in utility costs and sub-cost, transportation, et cetera. And so the combination of those swung the pendulum from one extreme all the way to where we are today. So a much, much better start to this year. So how do we look right now? Well, this year, I've been a bean counter for 20 years, and I tend to pride myself on being able to do projections. I can usually project where we're going to, where an organization is going to be financially within a year's time or a short period of time. This year is going to be nearly impossible to accurately project what our fund balance will be, or what our needs are going to be from now until the end of the year. And that's concerning, of course, but there's a lot of things that is beyond our control. So, like I said, normally, at the 10th day of the school, we know what our student ADM is. We know, we have a good idea of where we're at. But this year, there's just too much uncertainty. So we're preparing for many different scenarios. And when we bring the budget to you in October, we'll kind of talk through more in-depth of those different scenarios and what it might impact on to the bottom line. But I should say that none of the scenarios that we're looking at, whether it's Plan B or Plan A, I'm not concerned that we're going to run out of fund balance this year. I haven't seen anything that has given me so much concern that it has raised the alarm that we're going to run out of cash, and we're not going to be able to pay our employees or anything like that. I think it's just a matter of how healthy are we going to be at the end of this year? So some of our challenges, cafeteria sales will be down. So Ms. Edwards, the child nutrition, or excuse me, School Nutrition Director, made a really good analogy. You see, she told me once that the cafeteria is kind of like a restaurant within the school system. So if you think about a restaurant, it's supported by sales. So the sales of students in turn is what we use to buy meals for children and be able to support the salaries of our cafeteria staff. Well, our sales are going to be down regardless of whether we're on Plan B or Plan C. It's going to be a significant change. And this is probably our number-one wild card that we have this year. Even though we do normally operate at a breakeven or slight loss in our School Nutrition program, the amount of loss projected this year is really unknown. So there are some positives to it. And one of that is that we're able to continue to deliver meals to students. So whether they are remote or in person, we still have some volume of meals that will be delivered and can be given to children. The USDA has extended, and this one's probably the best positive that we have for Child Nutrition this year, is that the USDA has authorized the summer feeding through December. So summer feeding is essentially is free meals for students. And that has been communicated to parents, and it has been put out on a Connect Ed and emails to parents. That's huge for us, that will help pick up some of that red that we're going to experience in Child Nutrition. And then another piece that we've done is moved underutilized Child Nutrition staff into other areas. So Mr. Vetrano spoke about some of our vacancies in there. So we have moved staff from Child Nutrition and filled those vacancies, and that gets the loss off the books of Child Nutrition. So it's a temporary move. We'll still have to fill those positions once we go to Plan A, which hopefully will be sooner rather than later. But that's some ways to work around it so that we can offset some of the losses. And then we've used some potential savings in other areas, such as utilities and bus maintenance, et cetera. There was a, I'm jumping ahead of myself, but the flexibility in funding has helped us tremendously in that area. So this is one slide that needs to be updated, because since I've created it, we have flexibility in some of our spending. So originally, my example was that we can't use transportation funds to deliver meals to students, and now we'll be able to do that. So that was huge. And I echo Mr. Wooton's sentiment, when he's very appreciative of the actions that the General Assembly has taken, and I echo that. That's been huge for us. It doesn't cost taxpayers anything more than what they were already planning to spend in public education. It just allows us to utilize it in the most efficient way possible. And so that was, that was big for us. So, and my next slide is also outdated, because we need to be held harmless with ADM, and that has also been the case. This would have been a multimillion-dollar loss for us this year had we have needed, or the trend of our decline in enrollment, and I believe it's a temporary decline in enrollment, would have resulted in a reversion of state funds in December, and it would have been a multimillion-dollar loss for us. And so, again, this is money that has already been budgeted for us. It's not costing taxpayers any extra dollars than what was already planned. It's just allowing us to maintain. We already have staff employed. We've already made the decisions based off of what we expected. And so this helps us tremendously. So finally, the slide is not outdated. So we're restructuring. So what are we doing to improve our efficiencies? So how are we going to make sure that we do not ever get back into the financial crunch that we've had in the past? So one thing that we are working on is restructuring the budget. So that in and of itself doesn't solve problems, but what it does is it helps stakeholders and outside groups understand what we're spending on, you know, how are we spending our funds? And so that will be a change that you will see coming up in the October board meeting. So the budget amendment that you will see will look a lot different than what you've seen in the past. So I'll go into more detail in October, whenever I present it to you, but it'll still have the same information that you've gotten before, just with a lot more, a lot more detail to it. You'll be able to see what departments are spending and how much they're spending it on, and what the trend is for the year. So every department will have its own budget, usually by PRC. So PRC is program. So the curriculum department will have their budget, maintenance will have their component. Each department will have their own little pot of money. And so what that does is that helps us to track expenses, and it gives ownership to every expense. There's no longer, you know, give it to finance, let finance figure it out how to pay for it. It's got to come out of somebody's budget somewhere. And so that's a, that's a piece that will, I think, help both inside and outside stakeholders understand the budget. So another big one, departments must plan and defend budgets, including positions. And so that's a, that's a piece that is coming, that so departments will have their budget, and then we're going to review it every year. We have to get away from the, well, we've always done it this way. What we're going to do is look for ways to continuously improve. And so that's one of the changes that we're putting in place. So the goal was to get a maximum return on investment. So, and as a business accountant, you know, my job was to maximize profit, to maximize revenue and the dollars that business owners would have. And so we're kind of doing the same thing here, except for our dollars are not, not how much money do we have at the end of the day left over, but how much, we have X number of dollars. We have a certain pot of money that we've been given from taxpayers. Now, how do we invest that money to get the maximum return on that investment? So what is our return? Well, our return is student achievement. How do we take the dollars that we have, invest it in a way that we get the maximum amount of student achievement out of it? And so that is the metric, as we go through the budgeting process, when Dr. Bracy sits down and meets with all the departments and principals, that's the metric that gets applied, you know, how, what do you need to be successful? Let's look at how you've been spending your money. Is there better ways to do things? So some other positive things, we've moved $8 million worth of, and this is already past tense, because we've already moved it, we've moved $8 million worth of local salaries to state funds. So all that does is displace funds. It just takes, previously, we had a lot of purchasing that was done on the state side, and then a lot of salaries on local, where we're flip-flopping those, because there's efficiencies to be had when we utilize state funds, just like you saw in the wellness audit. There's efficiencies to be had whenever you have state-funded positions instead of locally funded positions. For example, workers' comp gets picked up by the state. There are certain things that the state basically is like our parent. You know, they give you a blank checkbook and say, here you go, son or daughter, you know, just write in how much you need to pay for that, and we'll take care of it. But there's certain pots of money that are like that. The state, not very many, but there's a few. And when we structure salaries and set them up in the state funds, there's quite a bit of savings that can be had in that regard. So we'll have more details on that in the October budget. So the elephant in the room for our budget, so in a normal year, outside of COVID, so second to COVID, our next big challenge is the EC budget. So this is a very busy slide. It's got a lot of figures on it, a lot of information, but the general, what we are, the story we're showing here is that our costs have skyrocketed over the last five to six years. So if you look at our EC expenditures in 2015, we had about $29 million, and in 2020, it had grown over $13 million to $42 million. Looking at, the majority of that was in salaries and benefits. So teachers are probably looking at home right now thinking, I didn't get a 45% pay increase. Well, that's because it's the number of staff, more so than the salaries and increases. If, in particular, if we look at EC pre-K, that cost has more than tripled in six years. So it went from $1.9 million of expenditure in 2015, we've paid triple that, or three times that amount in 2020, it was over $6 million. So one thing that the wellness audit identified or mentioned was the number of IPs. So how many students were identified? Well, that has only grown by 12.6% over that same timeframe. So when we look at our number of IPs, our number of IPs are almost identical to our growth in student population. So I'm not sure that I would necessarily agree that the number of IPs is what's driving our cost. And so that's one thing that we are working on now is we are studying where the costs are, and how to become more efficient in that. So how do we, how do we become more efficient in EC? That's a challenge. Well, I can tell you a few things that we're not going to do. So we are going to take corrective actions, but we're not going to cut services. So if I'm a parent at home right now, and I'm seeing the CFO talk about how much we've overspent in EC, or how much we are over-budget in EC, I'm worried about, you know, are we going to cut services? Well, no, we're not going to cut services. And since we're not going to cut services, I can, the unfortunate thing is, based on our current funding environment, I don't see us ever getting EC into the positive in the way we're currently funded, because how we are funded for the majority of our EC budgets is completely separate from the services that are provided for those children. In other words, you may have a child that comes in that needs $20,000 worth a year, $20,000 a year TA that needs to be assigned to just that student. What the state funding for that child is going to be, $4,400 and some odd dollars. You may have another student that comes in that... You may have another student that comes in that only needs a speech, language pathologist a couple of times a week. And that student might only need $2,000 worth of, of services. Well, that student's going to get $4,400 and however many dollars for that year. And then the state caps us at 12.75% of our total population. That could be identified as IP or, or that they're going to fund with IPs. But we are sitting at about 16%. So, we're higher than that. But I, from, from everyone that I've spoken to, it seems that Johnston County is well known for providing exceptional EC services for children. And so, that seems to be a draw for parents potentially moving into our district to take advantage of those services, which is, which is a good thing. But to put parents' mind at ease, there's going to be no cutting of services. There's going to be no push to reduce the number of IPs that, that we're currently providing. So, the IP conversations are completely separate from the budget talk. So, those are two different, two different things. Uh, we're not laying off anyone or reducing pay. So, those are the things that we're not going to do. So, because we're not doing those things, as I mentioned, we're never going to be, we're never going to be positive. We're never going to have, in this current funding environment, we're never going to have enough money to, to offset our losses. So, we're probably still going to be five to six million in the red, but we shouldn't be 10 to 14 million. So, so, how do, how do we fix it? Yeah, how, how do we fix it? So, if we're not going to, if we're not going to lay anybody off, if we're not going to cut services, how do, how do we do it? Well, there's, there's several ways that, that we're going to address this or attack it. So, one is to make sure staff are aligned with IPs. So, if you have a, a TA that's at one school, then we'll certainly, like, we used that example a while ago, that this one child needed a one-to-one TA. So, if, when that child graduates, that TA doesn't need to stay in that classroom. That TA needs to go to help another child that needs a one-to-one somewhere else. And that's one area I think that we might need to, to look at and improve upon. The, uh, look at EC processes in staffing. So, um, I'll, I'll use an example that, uh, with a meeting with Dr. Bracy and, and, um, and the EC Director. We, uh, one thing that was discussed was, well, we are outsourcing quite a bit of speech, language services. Uh, and there's ways that you could, that we could restructure and potentially hire more staff to work internally and do less contracting. And so, there's ways, there was ways around that. So, in some cases, we need to spend more to save more. And so, that, that's a good example of one of those areas. Uh, review contracted services, move all Medicaid billing costs to state funds. So, that's, so one of our funding sources is Medicaid, but we can't bill Medicaid if we're already receiving federal reimbursement for that child. And so, just that again is just nothing more than restructuring, how we pay and where we pay. So, we cover, um, another way to, to help fix this is we use position allotments to cover all of our deficit. So, when I say over budget for EC, we're still, we're going to budget the funds, but we're not going to be truly over budgeted. What, what our, what's probably a better way to say is that we're spending more in the EC program than what we receive funding for. And so, the, one way that we can help this is to, just like the Wellness Audit started, we're going to continue that to the next level. And actually, we already have done this, is to utilize position allotments. So, all, our position allotments for PRC is O1 for teachers, O7 for instructional support. Those are your two, your two main ones. Uh, we'll also, we'll use, it's not a position allotment, but we'll also use our TA allotment to help into there. So, whenever we present a budget next, next month, that'll, it'll be identified in there. How much of that budget of each one is being utilized to, to cover EC? So, what another way, and this is just the, just the start, was that a pre-K director role was consolidated in-house. So, current year projection, we are still looking at about $10 million of expenses beyond what our, our current funding is. The EC Director made a lot of strides, made a lot of movement and, and work this past year. If she didn't, if, if that wasn't the case, then we would be closer to $14 million over budget now. And so, there's been quite a bit of work that's already, that's already taken place. And then we're just going to continue that process. It's not going to be a quick overnight fix, but it, we, it, it'll probably take us a couple of years to, to get there. It wasn't, it didn't occur overnight and it won't, and unfortunately, we can't fix it overnight. Uh, but that's the, the process. Uh, another area is, is workers' compensation. And, um, this one, this one, the, the dollar amount overall isn't, isn't that much, but it's one of these areas that, that's like, uh, running your nails down a chalkboard. I just, I just can't stand to see it because it's not an efficient use of funds. Sampson County Schools, when we were there, we paid about $90,000 a year. So, I was expecting about $400,000 here for our, our workers' comp cost because we're four times the size. But we paid 1.1 million dollars in that. So, that, that really blew me away. And when I started talking to our insurance provider and trying to figure out what, what is going on with workers' comp. It's not so much, we, we do have some large claims. It wasn't so much our claims or that we don't have a safety policy. We do, we've got a very good safety policy. You know, it's not that we don't have safety meetings. We do have safety meetings. We have excellent safety meetings. It's our getting employees back to work. So, there, there's a couple of things that we can, we can do with that. One is our experience modifier. So, that is just the calculation that the actuaries do at, I think it's at the state level. And they determine, you know, what our risk is. Well, we're among the highest risk in the state. So, it's so high that we had trouble getting vendors to bid on our, on our, covering our workers' compensation on there. So, this has got to change. So, there's ways to correct it and the ways to correct it isn't that, that dramatic. And it's, it's allocate the cost to departments. So, currently, the way it's set up is finance just pays the bill. And we have a, we, that's, so nobody really has a, has a dog in a fight, so to speak. So, how do we make it, make it everyone's, how do we put everybody in the fight? Well, we impact their budget. And so, everybody is going to pay a portion, their prorated portion of the workers' comp overage. So, when they see that coming out of their budget each year, hopefully, that, that sends red flags off, you know, like, let's say, I'll just, I'm not, I'm not saying maintenance is a problem. I'm not saying that at all. It's just who popped in my head here. If maintenance wants to increase their budget by X number of dollars, then the first thing I'm going to say was, let's take a look at your workers' comp. Let's see how you're doing here and then how they are, are driving down cost or what actions that they're taking to drive down cost. And then we, we make light duty accommodations required. It's not optional. If, if an employee has the ability to come back to work, we're going to find work for them to do. They're not going to stay out. Then we're moving salaries to state funds because again, I used the analogy earlier, mom and daddy have a blank check for us there on that side. We're still going to implement the best practices, but that is one way to, to take advantage of that.
Mr. Britt, before you move on.
Yes.
Thank you for that. I've been asking about workers' comp for two years because to me, those numbers were exceptionally high and was told we just have a lot of employees. But I know that the bulk of our employees would be considered light duty employees. And the return to work, light duty accommodations that you're talking about, that's not just good for the school, but that's also good for the employee. Because their benefits, they don't get a full paycheck when they're out.
Right.
But if they're doing light duty, now they get a full paycheck. So, it's good for them and it's good for us. So, appreciate you doing this and making sense of why these numbers have been so crazy forever.
Yes, ma'am, that is, that is an excellent point. You're exactly right. When an employee is on workers' comp, just like you said, they earn two-thirds of their pay, I think, is the calculation. But if we bring them back on light duty, it's 100%. So, you're absolutely right. This is a win-win for everybody. Let's see, just in closing, uh, so this year will be extremely difficult to predict financially. But even in the worst case scenario, we're not going to be in a situation like we were last year where we are asking for a bailout. We're, I can't tell you exactly where we're going to end up. Hopefully, hopefully, we'll add to fund balance this year, but it just, it, there's, I would hate to, to guess how that, how that would be at this point. We'll present the budget in October and then our external auditors will present our financial statements in either October or November. And thank you for your time.
Mr. Britt, um, I, I really don't know where to start.
I promise you it'll slow down talking.
Well, I mean, we've never had a budget presented or a finance update presented in that way where I don't feel like I have to ask questions. It, it reminds me of the cartoon, if anybody ever watched Inspector Gadget, I watched that a lot. But you remind me a lot of him because you, you dig into it and you find out why, why something happens. And, um, you know, a couple of things, I'm not going to rehash everything that you, you mentioned, but the key, the key word is it, is being, running efficient, running efficient operation. Which I talk, we talk about that at the bank all the time, efficiency ratio. We live and die by our efficiency ratio. And, uh, and that's what it costs to operate a company off of $1. If you got 0.29, uh, 29 fish ratio, it costs you 29 cent to run. For every dollar you make, it costs 29 cent to run it. But some key things is the wild card cafeteria deficiency. I don't think any school system is going to be, uh, going to make money cafeteria this year. We're going to feed our students no matter what it costs. And I think everybody's going to be in the red. In that topic, $10 million fund balance is a whole heck of a lot better than zero or a negative fund balance. And, and I know the circumstances that cause that, but it's also about being efficient as well. And the little, the little things that turn into big things is converting local salaries to state salaries where they pick up the workers' comp and all that. Little bit of dollars each employee adds a lot to the bottom line. We all, as board members, need to really advocate the need for the increase in exceptional children from the state. I mean, we're, I know that we're going to provide the services no matter what, but we do need additional funding from, from the state to take care of that. And, and the main thing is, and this really hits home, is taking ownership of your department. Everybody needs to be involved in the budget. I think this is the first budget year where we really had individual departments coming in and giving their budgets to us. And it makes them understand what it costs to operate and also helped us individually see the operation of each department. And the last thing is, um, you have a vision for the school system to, to run efficient. And when we run efficient, we have money to, to buy extracurriculum. We have money to buy a math curriculum and a science curriculum and give the students more opportunities to, to, uh, for higher education. And, and that's what's important is educating the students that are in the classroom and, and providing them with the tools and providing the teachers the tools to teach with. And we can't do that if we're not efficient. But, um, I, I know Mr. Britt talked about, we know what we spend pretty much every month now. We can keep up with it. We know what our, uh, what it takes to operate each and every month, what we take in and what we, what goes out. And that's important. But I appreciate that update and well done. We appreciate you being here.
So, if I could, just a comment, a question. You know, awesome job with like the cost benefit analysis when it regards to like your ORI for personnel and expenditures. Perfect, perfect. And if you're not watching Stephen Britt, you need to watch him. He is, he's the biggest asset, one of the biggest assets we have had in a long time. So, thank you, Mr. Britt.
Thank you.
My question is just an idea for cafeteria sales. And you're probably about to say, well, Dr. Bracy, you're good for it and Mr. Johnson, you can't do that. So, I'm going to ask, can we do this? Would it be possible, and you would have to have like a staggered shift or staggered schedule, to deliver meals to children on Saturday and Sunday throughout the year? Who are in need to make up for those cafeteria sales? Because it's all about putting food in front of kids, right? That's what drives this restaurant business that we talk of. So, if we had staff that were willing to come in on Saturday and Sunday and feed the kids who are in need. And I imagine that there are some staff that would, you know, maybe enjoy the overtime or the compensatory comp, comp time. Or, you know, that would be willing to flex their schedules away from, you know, Monday, Tuesday and work Saturday, Sunday. I know we've got a lot of people with a lot of heart and right now, these are trying times. So, my question, could we do that? Could we come in on Saturday and Sunday and deliver meals or provide meals for those kids in order to try to get our numbers into the black? Is that possible or can you check on that? Because I imagine you didn't come prepared to answer that.
We, we would need to check on that. I know, I know during the summer feeding and, and this past March, April, May, that that was an option. And the way a lot of school districts worked through that was to, on the Friday pickups and Friday deliveries, they went ahead and, and prepared meals for the entire weekend. To cover, to cover the children through the whole weekend.
So, if we, if we can continue that, w- once hopefully schools reopen.
Y'all did that as well.
Yeah, but if we can continue that, that should make up for at least, I don't know, 30% of the loss. I wouldn't mean just quick math there, 30% of the loss. If you could deliver meals on the weekends throughout the remainder of the school year. And we're not just throwing food to throw food. There are legitimate needs in this community and it's not just those on government assistance. There are people struggling in every avenue of life that have appreciated this service during this time. And last, because this is very important to a lot of people, can you explain, and you've done it before, in your request or your, I don't want to say a plea, but in your thoughts regarding funding flexibility? You've talked about what that would mean for bus drivers and our funding model. Would you mind explaining to the people who may still be watching what this funding flexibility means to like our classified staff? And what we can do with this newfound flexibility?
Absolutely. So, some examples would be, just, just like, just like I mentioned earlier, prior to this, this additional flexibility that we have with transportation. We couldn't, we have a, a bus driver available that's ready, that's ready to go on the clock, ready to, to, ready to serve our students. We have a yellow bus sitting there. We have the fuel in the fuel tanks, ready to go. Everything is right, ready to go. But the state would restrict us and say, no, no Johnston County schools, you can't use that yellow bus and that bus driver and that fuel that you already have there to deliver meals to students. That, that is just a prime example of the restrictions that school districts are on. It, it really blew me away when I first got into education. I left, so I, prior to, prior to getting into education, my, my background was in, in trucking and logistics. And I thought, I thought logistics and trucking had a lot of regulations, like with IFTA and all that. I, I thought that would, but it blew me away when I, when I got into public education. So, I, I'm not an educator. I'm, I'm, I'm just a business person that works in education and. Yeah, that, that blew me away. So, the, the level of restrictions, another, another example, I, I could go on and on and on about restrictions. So, our TA funding allotment, let's say a principal at Benson Elementary or one of our elementary, you know, any, any, just pick any elementary school that we have. Say that principal says, I, I want to, I want to convert, I don't want to have quite as many TAs in, in my building. I want to convert two TAs to become a teacher and provide an extra support, maybe, maybe an in-person teacher instead of a, a virtual teacher. Right now, we can't do that. The, the TA pot of money is restricted. You can only have, you can only hire teachers, or excuse me, TAs with that funding source. And, and I could continue going on and on and on with that.
Right, and I think, I'm, I'm, I'm sure I'm not the only one, but I'm getting emails and messages from TAs and bus drivers. Am I going to get paid?
Yes.
And, you know, said before, we'll bounce the last check, but fortunately, we don't have to bounce the last check.
That's right.
It's going to be here. Is that what you're telling me?
But Plan B is the most difficult to, to forecast and, and, but everything that, everything that we've looked at so far. I, I have not seen anything that's given me pause to, to think that not, that we would have to lay anybody off or cut hours. I, I feel very comfortable that we can continue to provide that in the future. Now, if something unforeseen happens, that, that could change my, my, my view on that. But the big piece that helped us here was, was the ADM. When, when, when our ADM was locked down and I knew I wasn't going to have to give back $3 billion to the state in December. That, that, that really changed my concern from about an eight out of 10 to maybe about a six out of 10 at that point.
So, the last one, and you may not be prepared to do this at the time, but you said that there's a projection that you're, you know, you don't know what it's going to be as far as our fund balance. And can you give a worst case scenario, a reasonable worst case scenario? I know it could always go south, but what do you think dollars and cents would be our worst case scenario coming out of the school year?
My plan with the October budget amendment is going to be to give you the worst case scenario. And in that, in that scenario, it's going to have, we will, we will spend fund balance. It, it's, that will be in the, in the budget. But just because it's there, that's, that's my, that's as bad as what I could foresee it happening. And that'll be, so, we can only go up from there would be the, is the plan. So. And that'll be, so we can only go up from there, would be the, is the plan, so. Exactly, exactly. So, so I'm trying to think, well, a lot of my worst-case scenarios have, over this past week, have gone away because we've had to, we've gotten the flexibility in transportation.
We're expecting this one the same way.
Right, so, so that's, that's, so it's definitely gonna be a lot better than than what I was thinking as of last Friday.
Thank you, Mr. Britt.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Britt, just one last thing from me. And Mr. Johnson, we'll definitely check on what you suggested tonight, it's a great idea, trying to find revenue in any way that we can. Mr. Britt, what I clearly heard you say, and what my thoughts are, the more students we feed till December, while we have that USDA flexibility, the better off we are revenue-wise going forward.
Absolutely. There, there are some things that we do that are just a win for everybody, and that's one of them. That's a, it's a win for our parents, it's a win for our students, and it's a win for us financially. There, there's, there's no, there's no downside to it.
That, that being said, we talked earlier about community connection and community partnerships. Am I safe to say it would be in our best interest if we develop partnerships with daycares around the county to deliver meals to them? If they're interested, churches?
Absolutely, I believe, I don't, I don't want to speak for Ms. Edwards, but I believe that she's already been working on that with some of our churches. There were some rules about if, if we delivered it to the church and they were over a certain size, or we had a certain meals, and it had to be established as a feeding site, or whatever, there were some, there were some hoops that had to be jumped through, but she was working around them by making multiple deliveries, or in a lot of cases, the churches and community organizations come in to actually pick up the meals to deliver to children.
And and also know that we have had curbside service since the pandemic started here in Johnston County Public Schools. I wonder, is it, would we deliver or serve more meals if we took it to the students? I don't know how that's worked in the past with bus deliveries, with bus drivers, we talked about making sure they got their hours that they normally would receive. Would we have more meals delivered or used if we took it to them versus coming to the curbside site? And you may not know that answer.
I don't know, but I think it's an avenue well worth exploring.
We did.
I would agree.
We did do that from March until May. Buses went out into selected areas.
What, what about the virtual sites that that are, that Dr. Coates was talking about, that had the contracts for businesses? If you got a large group of students there, you might want to.
I think it's definitely worth looking into, Mr. Wood.
Well, the other thing is, while we're bringing out great ideas, is, you know, a lot of our schools have Backpack Buddies. And this is a great opportunity for us to coordinate a, a, a group together that we can assist these Backpack Buddies organizations at a lot of our schools to give them more meals. Because a lot of the times, for whatever the reason may be, some parents are just, they're, they're, they're too, they're too, they just have too much pride to say, hey, I need some assistance. But if we're gonna provide meals to them, we might be able to assist more of their children and things of that nature throughout the whole weekend, rather than, you know, my, we have one, my wife started at our church, but the whole thing, every time we pack these backpacks, and I believe they're packing them tonight, is, and we're going around the table, I'm like, if they have more than one sibling at home that, let's say the other sibling doesn't get a backpack because they're at a different school, you know, there might be a middle school, whatever, are they fighting over that bag of food that we're putting together? But if we're assisting them in this way, it's a win-win because we're giving them the food they need to make it through the weekend. So that's another opportunity for us.
Well, in addition to that, if we could incorporate the buses, for lack of better words, we could hybrid model it, because there's some, some students that can't get to us because their parents are working full-time, and there's some students that we're not reaching and feeding for the same reasons you're saying, but if it's just like on their regular bus route, here comes the bus, here's your lunch.
Partnership for children would probably be another good group to partner with to find out which students could use that service.
You know, I know what Dr. Smith was talking about, we had satellite stops set up, and I went on one and assisted one day with with Pine Level Elementary and, and, you know, into a neighborhood, and they set up for a couple of hours, and we had satellite stops around the county. And and that helped, but I think that we could reach more students if we did have the opportunity to take some of these routes and and provide them the meal, and they got a specific time that we were going through the county, so that could assist us in a lot of ways.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Britt, we appreciate your information. Ms. Roberts.
We don't have any reports, but we did move the driver's ed piece. We thought it was a critical piece for us to move out of consent items so that all our parents knew that we were listening to them about driver's ed. We think it's a very viable and and necessary piece to talk about tonight to make sure they understand that we are moving forward for the best interest of their student at this time.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman Sutton, Lady Vice Chair Smith, and members of the board, Dr. Bracy and Mr. Malone. Good to see you this evening, you're in the home stretch. Thank you for your patience as we have done our part to alleviate the spread of the coronavirus. I know that people have been waiting, waiting, waiting for the behind-the-wheel restart. And on June 15th, what we know is that House Bill 185, I believe it is, or 158, 158, was ratified to give us that opportunity to start behind-the-wheel driving. But we decided to keep it on pause during the governor's executive order. So now we are asking for your approval and blessing because we do want to cautiously restart following CDC guidelines. And I have the extraordinary Dr. Amanda Allen here with me, because if you have some granular questions, we're happy to answer them for you tonight.
Any questions regarding going ahead and starting back with driver's ed, behind-the-wheel?
I think it's important for one of you to tell parents what it will look like because it's, it's a little more complicated than just, oh, we're gonna go drive.
Absolutely.
If you could just explain the protocols and the precautions you're taking.
Sure, and some of my drivers might be hearing this for the first time as well, so that's good. Everybody will be on the same page. What this is gonna look like for driver's ed is, we're gonna, we're currently getting final approval from our board attorney on something to be in place in terms of the permission slip for voluntary restarting of driver's ed for parents to be able to sign, so that will need to be signed by parents before they're able to start up. And then we're going to have attestation forms, just like you've seen in all of the DPI things that have been released. So a parent will have to sign off that they haven't had close contact with anybody who's had COVID, they haven't tested positive for COVID, and they haven't had any symptoms, and they don't have a temperature of 100.4 or greater. So we're gonna be using the same standards as when we are able to go back into the school buildings. Our drivers, I'm really excited, we were able to pick up their supplies right before I came here earlier today. And each driver is going to have with them a pack of wipes, like I always say, anyways, wipes, gloves, masks, and hand sanitizer. And we are also getting them some trash receptacles and tissues for each of the vehicles. Sorry, that just makes me chuckle because that's like the one thing I missed in DPI's guidelines, it's like, oh, I would get, we'll get the tissues, we got the tissues. So anyways, they'll have all of those in their vehicles, and they'll be instructed to remove certain items before they leave. And we also have thermometers coming in, but I am fairly certain that all principals are very willing to loan thermometers while we are waiting on our shipment to come in if we're able to restart. And so they're gonna be checking their own temperature, students' temperatures, before they get into the vehicle. They're also going to be cleaning the vehicle, it's recommended by DPI that they do that in front of students, so if a student's wary at all, they'll see that this is being done. They're gonna need to ride with the windows down. And then when they transfer between students, they're gonna need to rewipe things down, such as the steering wheel, but the gloves will also mediate or mitigate some of that because I don't feel like the driver instructor is gonna need to have the gloves because they're gonna be the primary driver of the vehicle other than when the students are in the car. But for the protection of the students and cross-contamination, we're gonna ask that students wear gloves when they are taking the steering wheel during their driving portion. And we're going to maintain that everybody wear masks. The only exceptions to that will be if a driver instructor notices that a student is just unable to have visibility like they need to. And if that's the case, then the student that's in the vehicle will be the only one, the one who's driving will be the only one without the mask.
How many students will be in the vehicle at the same time?
We will have two students in the vehicle, and that's for, we always want to have two students per adult in any situation.
Will the students be picked up at the school? So the parent has to get the student to the school. The driver comes to pick up the two students and then delivers them back to the school for the parent to pick them up at the school.
That is correct, and we want parents to stay until both students are able to get into the vehicle, because it could be that the parent's there, and then, you know, fevers spike very quickly. If they're running a fever afterwards, we need the parent to be there to take them home. And that, we are also going to instate a protocol, if symptoms come on during a driving route, as safely as possible, the driver instructor is going to have the student turn around, take them back to the school, and then they're going to get out of the vehicle, stand very far apart, and then make phone calls for guardians to come and pick them up.
Great, we appreciate this information, Dr. Allen. We're excited to have driver's ed back in Johnston County. I know it's been a little bit of a financial strain for some of our parents and students going elsewhere for contract contracted services. And we, we're sorry we couldn't accommodate them, but at least we can put it back in force now, and we look forward to that. So with that being said, I believe it is an action item.
I have a question. Did I may have missed it, when, when will we be resuming these services?
As soon as I hear back from our board attorney about that parent document.
And do you have a list of how many students want this service and how long it will take to get them all driven?
So we have our outstanding list that we've held on to throughout, and it was in the 200s earlier. I'm not sure how much it's fluctuated with people moving and having private services and stuff like that. I don't have an estimation of how long it will take us to get through that because restarting is completely voluntary on our drivers as well. So those who feel like they are at a greater risk and want to do virtual classroom, we are going to be picking that up as well, so it will fluctuate a bit.
And the contracted services with with outside providers?
That is correct, we're not contracting services at all for outside providers. We do have some retirees, though, and and this might not be the right channel to discuss this, but if we wanted to provide flexibility in terms of the hours that students could drive, retirees might be able to provide such a.
Very good. And then are we still going to do, I know the list is very long, but typically, the student who is turning 16 or can get their license or permit quicker, that's how that list is still gonna continue to roll, correct?
Yes, we'll definitely be prioritizing based on that type of information with this group that we've got, who's already been in the queue for quite a while. And nobody asked it, but I feel like it's important to say, because we're not going back face-to-face on today, like we intended to originally when we proposed September 8th, we consulted with the health department, and in the health department, Dr. Pearson is wonderful, she reached out to her colleagues to see if it had been an issue in other areas to restart drivers' education. So we are making an educated, informed decision in proposing this to you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and entertain a motion in a second, Dr. Smith, and if it comes back, let us know.
So moved.
So motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Wooton. Dr. Smith, did it come back? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, motion carries 7-0. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved.
Motion by Mr. Wooton, second by Ms. Sessoms, yes, yes. All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.